Okay, we're live. How you doing everybody? And welcome to the John Riley Project. You know, I always get excited in the political season, especially here in our hometown of Poway, because there's so many really great candidates that are running for Poway School Board, for Poway Mayor, and for Poway City Council. And today we have a gentleman that is a candidate in District Three. It's the district that I live in. So this is a real pleasure to get back together with Tony Russo. How you doing, Tony?
Good Johnny, how are you, buddy?
Good to see you.
Good to see you, bud.
We're gonna have some fun tonight. I think we're gonna talk a lot about your candidacy, maybe a lot of issues in Poway. And, and you know, I know there's a lot that you want to do in this town to make it better for everybody here. And so we're gonna go through it all.
It's been a, it's been quite a whirlwind in the last few years, yeah.
Yeah. So anyways, I just want to tell the audience, if you're watching online, if you are participating in the livestream, you just need to enter, you know, some text on the live, on the livestream, on either Facebook or YouTube. We'll see it here on our screen and then we'll take your questions and comments. So yeah, so let's just kind of dive in. How's the campaign going so far?
Great, you know, it's, it's been, yeah.
Looking at the postcard here.
The, the postcard mailers have been going out and there's another set coming out soon. You know, we've been talking to a lot of, not only people that live in my district, but outside of the district too. And getting a lot of feedback. Obviously, you've seen my signs around town. And you know, John, it's been, it's been a fun, fun, fun time. And, and hopefully it'll turn out good come November eighth.
You mean, your race to me is fascinating because there's three candidates, right? And you guys, the three of you are very different and you all have sort of a different perspective on things. And that's why I'm really interested to, to learn more about your candidacy. But you were just at the Green Valley Civic Association Poway Chamber Candidate Forum. That was about a week or two ago.
About almost two weeks ago, yeah.
And how did that go for you? Did you enjoy it?
I did. Great feedback, not only from the, the people that were there, but also from people on Facebook and, and friends and family and voters. Poway wants to change. Poway wants someone that steps up for them. And not for the council members, not for the big businesses. They want someone to talk on their behalf and to have, to be listened to. And that was one of the main things that I focused on during the town hall is that, you know, it's time. I mean, you, you look, John, and we can go into details and we'll do this. You know, in 2018, when I ran, one of the biggest issues and one of the biggest things that was promised to all of Poway was the Poway Road Corridor. We were supposed to have a crown jewel. You know what the crown jewel turned into, John? That's, you know, and I know we're going right into this, but you know, I don't want to beat around the bush. It's a hole. It's, it's bankruptcy. It's dollars that were spent to bring something into Poway that was promised that hasn't been kept. People were pissed.
Yeah, I mean, the development to me is by far the dominant issue in, in not only in the campaign season, but really around town. People talking so much about it. And I know it's a big part of your platform. So you're talking about the outpost, but that's not the only project going on around town. No. What, what are your thoughts about all of this change in our city?
You know, in a city, when a city grows, there's change.
Yeah.
I mean, when I had my business, it grew. We had to change. I had to get more employees. I had to sit there and, and hire more cooks. I had to get better TVs. So I understand change. But when you change and you don't ask the people of Poway what they think, or you don't respect their opinion, you kind of brush it underneath the rug, that's not change. That's just like, hey, I'm gonna do what I want to do. And I don't really care what the citizens of the Poway or the constituents want in their certain area. You know, I go down Poway Road almost every day because you know that I coached Little League and I volunteered for my son's teams and flag football. So it takes me now to go to Palmerado Road, almost 25 minutes to go from Anarino to Palmerado.
Wow. That's a long distance.
And, and what, three miles, three and a half miles?
Something like that.
There's, I mean, between stoplights, between traffic delays, between construction, between, you know, watching people look at the hole in the wall. And I mean, actually, it's like a, a, a site that people look at as they drive by. I mean, it's almost like a monument that people look and know. And I mean, if you're not from Poway and they come into it, it's like, oh, what is that? So you know, it's, it's a big eyesore.
Well, it's probably like either running the gauntlet or being on an episode of American Gladiators, right?
Well, we did have, we did have, we did have the, what was the, the family plots that was right next door?
Yeah.
With the, the Poway mortuary. So you're right, it is kind of almost like a reality show that people are looking into here.
Yeah. Well, you know, I, I used to make that trip every day because I used to live on the end of Garden Road and it was tough then. And now it's a lot worse. I mean, people that use Poway Road as their main thoroughfare, a lot of them are really angry about what they're, not only the congestion, but also what they're seeing. So walk me through that with, with, you know, we're talking about the outpost. We all know that's delayed. Do you think there's anything that you could do if you were elected on as City Council to kind of help restart that project?
First and foremost, John, is that the projects that are being done, obviously they've been voted on, the council has passed it. Can we readdress certain issues? Anything can be readdressed.
Of course.
You know, I hear people talking that says, oh, once it's passed, we can't do anything about it. Not true. I mean, if, if, if it's a hazard, if it's something that's an eyesore, if it's something that, you know, that we can get our hands involved in, we can do it. The problem is the current council doesn't want to do it. They don't want to have any pushback from the developers. They don't want to have any possible, you know, lawsuits that may come about it. The biggest thing is that we were promised things. And in four years since 2018, we're in 2022 now, going 2023. What has happened? We've got a hole in wall. We've got high congestion going down Poway Road. We've got buildings that I don't want to say that look like crap, but you know what? You go down Poway Road and I look at him and I say, wow, everything looks like it's a cookie cutter type project. And these homes are $900,000 million home, John. So it's not like you're saying they're low income homes where, you know, they're saying, hey, affordable living. No, these are homes are million dollar homes.
Townhouses, actually.
Townhouses.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you, you know, the best part, my daughter says this to me all the time, she's like, Daddy, how would someone, why would somebody want to buy a house on a corner that has the taco shops light blinking in there?
Yeah.
I said, well, they probably got a discount for that one.
Yeah, well, imagine, you know, Friday night at one in the morning when, when people are going through that drive-through and then, and that's coming through their bedroom window. It's gonna be something.
You know, John, we, we need change. It, there's, there's no doubt about it. You know, the competitors that are against me right now and, and even the other day, they all want, they all sit there and say that it's Sacramento's fault and it's this and that. Oh, it's, it's, we're at a local level here. We have the authority to stand up to Sacramento. We have that authority. Will it change everything? Maybe not. But we just talked about what was going on in, in Ranch Bernardo. It might stall certain situations to give the people more of a voice and give them the opportunity to get the voice heard to the council.
You know, that's an interesting topic because I've heard that from a lot of other candidates is that they feel that City Council is not listening, that they're not paying attention to what the people want. I mean, are you experiencing that frustration from voters when you're talking to people on the trail?
Yes. Obviously, that's been, that's something that all of my competitors and everybody's been saying that they don't listen. But I think for someone that's lived here for the last 43 years, and I've seen what has happened from Poway, from when it was just a big bear market, one shop, you know, one light. You know, we had a trailer park. You know, it was, it was a small town. So yeah, people are saying, hey, wait a minute. I can't, I moved into Poway where I want to raise my family and be the city and the country. But now it's not. You know, we kind of have to stop, reflect, look at what mistakes have been made. Can we address those issues? Absolutely. Can we fix them? Yeah. We can talk, we can talk about it. We can get together with, you know, the, the right officials and say, hey, what's going on? What can we do to make the people of Poway happy? You know, you walk down Poway Road and, and you know, I've lost a lot of weight. We talked about this earlier.
Yeah.
I walked down.
You're looking good.
Thank you. I walked down Poway Road, five miles every day for, during COVID, three to five days a week.
Wow.
And I watched the construction going up. I watched, you know, the, the, the senior center being built. I watched the, the senior affordable homes or the senior homes being built. And I look at him like, who plans this? I mean, you, you come up to, and I know I have friends of mine that are developers and they say, Tony, well, what, they bring it to the city, the city okay's it. Yeah, the city okay's it. But there should be someone to look at this and say, wait a minute, this doesn't look right. You know, setbacks, you talk about no setbacks. Walking down Poway Road, you know, if there's a car coming at you, John, you have nowhere to jump. Where you going? You're jumping, you're jumping in, in, on Poway Road or you're gonna get hit. So the promises that we were made that, that Poway Road was going to be this date night area where everybody's gonna come in, walk down Poway Road, have fun, we're gonna be able to entertain, you know, go out to eat, live, eat and play. Where is it?
Well, you know, it seems like the vision of Poway Road has changed many times. Like when I moved to town in the nineties, they, they were talking about having a downtown. You know, that, that maybe Poway Road was narrower. Maybe people had diagonal parking and there was a, like a live, like a walkable downtown, like we see in a lot of other cities, like Grand Avenue in Escondido is an example. But it's definitely not turned out to be that. It's, it's now really, it's a neighborhood of all this new housing. They promise that there's gonna be commercial property, mixed use, but we really don't know what that's gonna be yet.
No, I mean, right, right now with the, the mixed use where the townhome is, they have a real estate office on the bottom level. I mean, is that considered mixed use where you have a small business 500 square feet that they're putting in, in a, in a project? You know? Explain to the people, explain to the voters what's actually gonna be done. Don't wait till there's a mistake and cover it up. And I could go down a list for you, John. You know that. We can go from Espola Road.
Yeah.
We can go to the farms, we can go to the water rate. We, I mean, we'll touch on every subject here. There's a lot of mistakes that were done. And, and even when I ran in 2018, the pool, you know, that was a major mistake. That was a blunder beyond blunders. Where, and you know, you have people that are supposed to look at the project before it gets done to make sure it's okay. And you hired these engineers that are supposed to be working for you and it didn't work out. And then it cost us more money during the heat of the summer. Now, obviously that's past, the pool looks great. Is that the only mistake that's cost us money?
It's like Saturday Night Live, Roseanne, Rosanna, Dana. You know, it's not one thing, it's another, you know? Hey, I just want to tell the audience, if you don't mind, we're live streaming, so you can participate in this. If you've got questions or comments that you want to share with Tony, Tony will take those questions and answer them. Just type into the comment section on Facebook or on YouTube and we'll field them as they come. So all good, you know? And I think the outpost was supposed to be, you know, obviously a kind of a premier mixed use facility, right? They were gonna have the urge and the, the food court. And then there was gonna be a workout gym facility of some sort, mixed with apartments of one, two, three bedroom. But that whole thing blew up, so.
Why?
Why?
You know why? I know why.
Well, do you tell that, tell everybody why?
The people that are listening is that, that it wasn't properly reviewed to the point where they knew there were certain situations that could happen. They were at a, a flood area, flood zone. They, you know, it's common sense. This is, we need to bring back common sense, John. I mean, if I'm walking down the street and I'm walking in the street, I'm gonna get hit with a car, right?
Yeah.
If I build in a flood zone, what's gonna happen?
You're gonna get flooded.
Now, we may not get a lot of rain in Poway, do we?
Not much.
But when we do, what happens?
It's a deluge.
So, I mean, and here we are that we hire, we're supposed to be hiring the best of the best with the money that we paid. You know, there's someone's got to be at fault. We can't always say, well, we didn't know or, you know, the developer didn't know or, you know, it's a developer's fault. That's what I hear a lot about. You know, when I, when I listen to a lot of the, the council meetings and, and people that interact with council, they always tend to push the blame on to the developer. We, our hands are tied, you know? Once we sign off on it, our hands are tied. You know, I made a comment last week, I don't think that's true. I think if they really want to, they can go in and make sure that the project is done correctly at certain points, at certain intervals of every part of that project. They don't have to be so-called Big Brother where they're gonna be, you know, hey, we own this property. Cause you're right, it is a private property. But once a developer gets involved, now it becomes a developer's issue where they're developing certain things. If they don't develop it correctly, what happens? Is there any consequences?
Fair point. I mean, you, you would expect that if there's a permitting process that the city inspector is gonna be out there at various milestones of the project, kind of inspecting, signing off, letting them go to the next phase or stage of the, of the project. Was, was that not happening, do you know?
That's, John, that's common sense.
Yeah.
Common sense is we're supposed to have, just like with the pool, they were supposed to have certain people go out there and make sure that the water would be able to, to hold up in the pressure in the pool. Didn't happen. Mistake, Espola Road. We were supposed to make sure that we had certain, you know, the heights of the wall that didn't happen. I mean, why? I mean, are these, we're paying them. Are they not going out there and doing their job? You know, again, it's the city that has the control of their employees that need to go out and make sure that things happen. When a developer, now, obviously the big issue now is at the farms.
Right, yeah, yeah.
It's huge. Now, in, in the contract that Mr. McNamara obviously made up for, you know, his own well-being, it states that they will handle their own issues if anything arises. If a, if a developer has an issue with building a wall that's 10 feet too high or 10 feet too close to a neighbor's yard, that's an issue not with the developer that's doing it. That should be an issue with the people of Poway and the city should be involved in saying, hey, wait a minute, you're not doing what's done, what was supposed to be done. Once it's built, are they really gonna make the developer knock that house down and say, oh, sorry, you gotta go back 20 feet?
Well, yeah, we, we were talking, I guess, about that family that went before City Council, the, the husband and wife and pleaded because they had that beautiful home that had that golf course view. And of course, that got blown up with Measure P. But yeah, the question was whether or not that house is being built too closely. But the city manages the parcel lines, the boundaries of each property. And there are supposed to be easements and other kinds of buffer zones. So that's one of some of the questions that I had is, are the developers flagrantly breaking the rule? Or has the rule been changed? Or is no one paying attention and the developer's just doing whatever they want?
I think a little bit of all.
Hmm.
I think a little bit of all. I think the developer knows that they have it in their contract where if there's something that needs to be changed, that's not a quote unquote, in their eyes, a major issue, they can do it without going to the proper channel through the city. Now, when it's done and someone goes and complains to the city, the city comes out, such as Mayor Voss has stated, that the developer, Lennar, has hired one of our own under their dime to oversee the project. That doesn't make sense. Why would the developer hire one of their own to oversee the project? Have someone out there that's benefiting the city to make sure the developer is doing the job correctly?
Well, I mean, just devil's advocate. The, the developer is gonna have like a general contractor. They're gonna have like a head honcho that's in charge of the whole thing.
Right.
But you would expect that the City Council will also deploy their building inspectors, you know, some, their engineering department, I don't know the detail. But they would be there, like we said earlier, they would be there to make sure the rules are being followed.
Chain of command. Very simple. I've done construction of a house, I've flipped homes, I've known developers. You, when you have a general contractor, you hire him, he subcontracts people out. If the subcontract doesn't put the cement, the rebar correct, who's ultimately responsible? General contractor.
That's right.
If the general contractor doesn't do it correctly, who's ultimately responsible? When the city comes back and says, hey, wait a minute, this is not what was said that was gonna be done. Can the city say, wait, take that property over? No, no, it's, it is private property. But the city can put a halt, just like we talked earlier, where they can come down and put a red tag on your door where it says, wait a minute, your electrical hasn't, your, your permit for electrical isn't approved until you get it fixed. You can't go on to that next phase. You cannot go and put drywall up. You cannot go and, and put, you know, plumbing in until this is fixed. But when they're doing, and I'm gonna give you an example here, John. The farms, in six months, the farms have been put up quick.
Yeah.
Quick.
It's happening fast.
In four years, Poway Road. Why? Why? Is there, I mean, the city cares about the farms more than they do about Poway Road? Is it the developer has more money? Is it that the people that are behind it saying, hey, we need to get this done and get it fast, quick? You know, so there's that question. Do I know that answer? No.
Well, again, devil's advocate, could be supply chain issues.
Four years ago, we didn't have supply chain issues when we, when we started Poway Road.
Yeah, yeah. Well, did, when, when did they get the golden shovels and the hard hats at the outpost?
You meant, when everybody went out there and made a big hoopla? It was gonna be the crown jewel?
Yeah.
That was about four years ago.
Okay, so it was before COVID.
Yeah, 2018.
Okay. So it's, it is interesting. I mean, again, devil's advocate, there is a lot going on with building materials. It can be difficult to have. Some of them might have had them lined up, maybe not. But to your point, it's valid. The Poway Road development has been stalled at the outpost. The Poway Commons seems to be chugging along, right?
Doing in phases because obviously they're not, they're not a huge developer as Lennar is. Obviously, money talks, we know that.
Yeah.
And we'll talk about that too, how a lot of this money has been influenced in, in our races.
Yeah, that's a huge recent topic.
Big time. And, and people are getting tired of the fact that they're not saying they don't want things built. What they're saying is, do it right. Give us a voice. Hear us. There's, there's a development on Twin Peaks.
That's the new one that's starting up, yeah.
And that's, that's in my district. And I've talked to a lot of people in that district, in that area. They're pissed.
Yeah, yeah.
John Mullen, the, the council member that's supposed to represent these people, basically said, sorry, you know, we have to lose the battle to win the war. And I have that in writing. We have to lose the battle to win the war. What does that mean?
Yeah. What does it mean?
What does it mean?
I don't know.
If I'm, if I'm an owner of a piece of property that traffic is going through and I come to you and you're my council member and I get an email back and says, well, I'm sorry, we sometimes have to lose the battle to win the war. Is that saying that you're not, you basically, you know what? We don't really care?
So I'd assume that losing the battle means allowing the construction to be, to continue on Twin Peaks, to have that lot developed. But what's the war?
So the biggest part of the issues that was happening there was the neighbors were complaining about the entry point, the exit point.
Right.
The current council allowed it to happen. They went, according to Mayor Voss, he went against it, which I think was more of a political stunt rather than anything else. Again, that's just my opinion. You, if you really want to stop something and delay it and listen to the constituents, you're, the people that are voting that have you in your district, you can stop it 30 days, 45 days. It's been done on Poway Road. I mean, you, you can go back. No, they went in there to cut the trees down. They did, I mean, they went bam, 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 bam. Because again, they want to get that things done quicker. Because once things are done, it's too late to go and undo them.
That's, that's a good point.
It's too late, right?
Yeah.
You remember when Kevin McNamara cut all those trees down on Midland Road? And everybody was pissed off? He went there, he did it. He got, he didn't care. City was pissed off. This is not the current council, this is the prior council.
Okay.
And that was Mickey Cuffin. That council listened to people. They were pissed off. People were pissed off that things happened. And what did they do? They went down and they fined the crap out of him. And they made sure that he was, now this council loves him, but the other council said, no, man, you, you don't, you're not, you know, yeah, you own the property, but you have to go by the rules that are set for the people of Poway. You have to go by the rules that the developer have when they sit there and submit a plan. If you don't, then it's basically, hey, you know what? Let the developers do what they want. Kind of like what we're doing right now. All right, that's all right, you're a developer, go ahead. And again, I know I got a lot of developer friends that are probably telling me like, Tony, you know what, you know, talking about, no, I understand how development works. It's about taking maybe one step back and saying, hey, yeah, there is an issue here. You know, the people on Twin Peaks don't want their neighborhood to be filled up with cars going through there. Why didn't they put an access road on Twin Peaks? Why didn't they do a study? There's already an access road on Twin Peaks. I know why. It costs more money, John. My good friend that passed away, Mr. Richardson, Jerry Richardson, he built a dealership in town. His, one of his biggest expenses, he said, Tony, is when you have to go back and put setbacks, you have to make driveways, you have to make entrances, you have to put a light. That's an expense, major expense for developers.
Right.
Not building a house, the building doesn't cost that much. It's putting all, where the plumbing, where, where the sewage, all that stuff that's caused. So if they can find a way to tap into an existing, saves them a lot of money and they make more money.
Right.
But are the people happy? So again, I understand what, you know, his thing, like lose the battle to win the war. Well, his verbiage on that was because he wanted to lose the battle because he knew that if he fought for the people, there would probably be lawsuits from the developer. But you know what? That's why we have a city attorney. That's why we pay him. That's why we have him to look at that for us. He works for us, the people.
Mm hmm.
Doesn't work for the council. You know, they say they do, but it's, no, it's for the people. The council hired him, the mayor boss hired him, the city manager hired him, but he's supposed to work for us. If we have an issue, we bring it to him and say, okay, let me look into it. Not like, oh, on the QT, you know what, if we push this, we're gonna get sued by so and so, and then you know what? It's gonna cost us ten times more. Well, it may cost us ten times more, but if the people listen and they listen to the people, then we can sit there and say, wait a minute, if we're giving in to the developer, what are we getting back? Are we getting something in return? Because right now, I don't think we're getting anything, are we?
Um, yeah, fair point. Um, I mean, they're providing obviously housing, uh, for people that will eventually move in there, but it's not as if the, they're, you know, creating, well, the farm is creating some sort of a public access community park, but Poway Commons isn't. Fairfield.
You really, John, come on.
No, no.
You really think the farms, what, the butterfly farm?
Not the butterfly. Well, the butterfly thing may or may not happen, we'll know. But there's gonna be trails through there that's in the plan.
True, I understand that.
Yeah.
But there's trails all around that area where, I mean, and I understand what you're saying, the commons doesn't have trails.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's smack dab down Poway Road.
Correct.
They want, they want to put high density homes down there where they can sit there and cram as many things as possible.
Yeah.
And for the greater dollar wise on your end, here, obviously, these homes are, you know, upward to two million dollars. So they know they can put, you know, a trail, kind of sit there and sell that, that ambiance to whoever's buying it. You know, they may be retiring, whatever it may be, like, oh, you're living the lifestyle of retirement, you know? So it, it, you're, you're talking apples and oranges. I mean,
Right, right.
This is a complete different project, but again, you still have to go by, and I'm, when I bring up the farms, I bring up the fact that there was a lot of issues, um, leading up to the development. In two thousand eighteen, obviously, they didn't vote it, they voted it down, they didn't want it. Um, the people were pissed. Um, and that was, you know, citywide. And what happened? Eight foot, twelve feet weeds growing? Fire hazard?
Mm hmm.
Why didn't the city, why didn't the city go in there and say, hey, wait a minute, there's a fire hazard, this can't happen?
Hmm.
If this happened down my street and I had weeds that was growing in an area where it could cause a fire, I'd have the fire department at my house saying, hey, you need to put a, a fire break there, and you have thirty days to take that down.
Mm hmm.
Sorry, bud.
No worries.
Hey, I get all these people calling, sorry, Johnny.
It's all right.
My bad. Um, sorry, guys. Um, I thought I had it turned off, so my apologies. So going back to that, it's, you know, it's gotta be fair and equal to everyone. It doesn't matter if that the developer or the person that pushed that through on the farms has big, big money and have, has more, you know, affluent friends that had it passed. Because that's basically what was. I listened to his podcast with you, and he said, well, if it doesn't happen, it's gonna, this is what's gonna happen, blah, blah, blah. So it basically gave a, a, you know, well, if you don't do this, this is what's gonna happen. So there's really no alternative. You're damned if you do, you're damned if you don't.
Mm hmm.
It's being built. I still don't understand how it's being built ten times faster than what's happening on Poway Road. Now, you're saying that the supply issue?
No, I'm just presenting that as a potential. I'm just guessing.
Well, I can understand, I can understand a bigger builder have, they buy products and they, they put it in their warehouse knowing that things may go up, but I think a lot of builders actually kind of hold back and buying lumber at, at, you know, the high end, because they think there's gonna come down. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't, it wouldn't behoove them to sit there and, and and buy products now when inflation's so high, when they're hoping that it's gonna come down.
Right. I mean, for, definitely developers play that timing game to try to, you know, maximize their margin, right?
You're hedging your bet.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a common thing. Um, but again, I don't know why the farm is going up faster than the, I mean, we all know the outpost is stalled, it's in bankruptcy, that's a mess. Um, but Fairfield's moving along at a pretty steady clip right now. I mean, are, are they going vertical there yet?
Well, John, um, let's go back to the, you, you talked about the bankruptcy.
Okay, let's go there.
It's in bankruptcy and they, the original owner
Mm hmm.
got it back because the developer went bankrupt. Now, the original owner does, you know, the, the city's pushing it off that, oh, we've got new plans being submitted. The original owner doesn't want to build anything there. He wants to sell it to, to developer. So why, why, why is the current council giving us a song and dance about that? Why not come clean and say, hey, we made a mistake? Let's fix it. We're sorry. Everybody makes mistakes, John. You make mistakes. I've made a lot of mistakes in my life. So let's just be upfront with the people of Poway and say, hey, you know what? Yeah, but we're gonna try to fix it. We're gonna make sure that it's going to be a crown jewel. Not like, hey, I don't care. Not our problem anymore. Developer, they're bankrupt.
Mm hmm.
Private property, that's all I hear. Private property, we can't get our hands in it. I don't know, John.
Yeah, it's, 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 it's interesting because it is private property. They do have the, um, control of that property. The city has influence, the city can issue permits, revoke permits, allow construction, prevent construction. So there's a little bit of give and take there, but honestly, I don't really know the, the nuances of what's happening with that particular. The original developer's gone, yeah, another, is it the original developer or another one came in?
Well, again,
I don't know.
From what I understand, we went to our, uh, meet and greet for all the council members and, and, and people that are running for city council mayor. Um, one of the questions that I asked was, was that property bought? And they said, and they were all happy, yeah, yeah, it's being bought. And they said, there, there's plans being submitted. I said, well, they bought in bankruptcy court. And their eyes all flared up, said, yeah.
Yeah.
Usually when you buy something in bankruptcy court, you're buying it pretty cheap.
Yeah.
And usually the person that's buying it is either gonna try to flip it or they're gonna try to sell it to a developer to make more money.
Yeah, of course.
Right. So right now, I don't believe that there's the quote unquote, what they said, there's a current plan for it. Um, I think they're using that as a stall tactic, obviously, that election. You know, it's, um, if there was a plan, why didn't you put it out there? Why don't you let the people know about it?
Mm hmm.
You know, here's what, here's what they submitted. This is what they want to do.
But how should I say this? First of all, has a plan been submitted? They say it's been submitted. We haven't seen it?
That's what I'm saying. They, they stated, and, and this is from the all the members of, of the city, the only person that wasn't there was Mayor Voss and Dave Broch was there and Deputy Mullen wasn't there and Kayla Frank was there. But everybody else has stated that, yes, there's plans that have been submitted and they're in the process of getting things taken care of. Well, tell the people.
Well, yeah, I mean, because that is an eyesore, it's a, it's an ugly symbol of everything that's kind of going wrong on Poway Road. You'd think that they would want to put some positive PR around it, or at least, like you say, just be transparent. You know, just share with us, what are the facts, what's going on, and then we can at least be informed. You know, we, we may not be pleased with the status, but at least we know.
And you know what? We may not get what we originally wanted, which I don't think will happen. But if we get something, it's better than what's there.
Mm hmm.
And if they have to go in and fill up that hole and completely redo it, then, then do it. Because here's my question, John. It's been sitting for almost three and a half years now, where, I'd say about three years.
Yeah.
Rebar, wood, all the cement, all that stuff has been, you know, out in the open exposure, rain. We haven't had snow, but you know,
but yeah.
Cold, well, you mean, the climate. So how much is that still valid to you? How much is that, you know, are they gonna have to knock everything down in, from scratch? You know, tell us.
Mm hmm.
Let us know what's going on.
And then even if they found someone to go, go in and start the project again, whether or not they kept the materials, there's still the open question of if they can stop the water, right? Because they've hit the water table, they couldn't stop the flooding. So maybe it turns out to be a situation where they do have to fill it in, because the underground parking just simply is a no go there.
I, I've heard stories that they have now, they put high end pumps in there and, and, and these pumps are supposed to be unbelievable and then it stops. So I, I mean, there's so many different stories, again, stories, not facts that I know of.
Yeah.
So that's what, again, I'll go back to what I said earlier. Be transparent. Tell us what's going on.
Mm hmm.
Even though that's technically not my district, I drive and walk down that area every day. Every person in Poway that lives in Poway has seen that.
Oh, for sure.
Guarantee you.
For sure.
Every person.
Yeah.
I don't care if you live on the south end, north end, west end, you've gone through and looked at that and said, oh, what is that?
Mm hmm.
Now, obviously, the people that lived here longer know the, the big boo boos that's been made, but the people that are moving into Poway, they're like, hey, what's going on? They think, they think that something's being built there, like, they don't understand. No, it's just, it right now.
Well, I got a question for, well, one of my buddies was, uh, lives in Penasquidos, and he comes into Poway every once in a while to go to Walmart. And he said, what in the hell's going on there? I mean, and, and what's, why is it stalled? What's the story? I mean, so yeah, a lot of people that are new to town or people that visit irregulately are probably going, what the hell, you know?
Okay, so let me ask you this, John, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here for you.
Okay.
I'm going down Poway Road and I want to buy a house at the, uh, the new development.
The Commons.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. Now I drive down, I look at Walgreens and Walmart and Allison, I see this big hole in the wall. No answers. I asked my realtor. I don't know.
Yeah.
You know, like, what is that supposed to be? Now, that, I mean, obviously, it affects not only the businesses that are around them, but it also affects the, the dollar values of the homes.
Yeah, you're right.
It affects the dollar values of the businesses that trying to make money in that area. Because if, there's no real conclusion, no one really knows what's gonna happen.
Mm hmm, mm hmm. You're right. And, and it, it will make people think twice about moving in. Like you said, it could lead to lower property values. You're right. It just seems like, to your point, it's, we're all wondering really what the story is. And has the city manager, uh, made a statement? The city council, have they, that's not communicated effectively? Are they not communicating at all? I don't know, but you're right. People have questions.
Lack of communication is number one. Um, that's when the mistakes happen, and, and it's something that should be from here on forward, for the new council members, for if new mayor, if there's a new mayor, whatever it may be, it needs to be made aware to the, to the people of Poway right away, in a timely fashion. If it's thirty days, if it's forty five days, let it be known. Not three years down the line saying, oh, we think it's being built and all said, uh-oh, then bankruptcy.
Wow. It's, it's, you're right, it's frustrating as hell. I mean, as, as voters, as residents, trying to understand what's going on, you know, maybe it's been communicated, maybe we're not listening, maybe it's been communicated ineffectively. Regardless, people are not sure what the status of that project is. We got some questions from the audience. You wanna take a few?
Hit them.
All right, let's see what we got here. And this one's from, uh, Pete Neal.
Pete, how are you, my friend?
Says, Tony, I have two questions. One, what are your feelings about the intersection of Stone Canyon and Martin Coit? You know the whole story behind this one?
Little bit, yeah. You want to fill me?
Yeah, I'll, I'll give you, I'll set it up.
I, I know, I kind of.
It's, it's, uh, Stone Canyon and Martin Coit is kind of a blind intersection where the, some people have said there needs to be a three way stop. But right now, there's only a, one part of it has a stop sign. Um, there has been some accidents there, some near misses there. Um, and this general area, when you're going down Martin Coit down the hill or down Stone Canyon down the hill,
Best road.
people really haul butt.
I know.
So, uh, there was a, it was brought to the city council, uh, by some of the residents wanted to put a three way stop. Other residents didn't want the three way stop. The city deployed their traffic engineers and they said, we want a three way stop. That's the right thing to do. But the city council said no. They went against their own people and their own recommendations. That's the, so what do you think?
Well, I think, uh, the majority of the people's voices should be heard. Obviously, the city council put it down, and then I'm gonna say this, and maybe this might be off cue on it, but we know Mayor Voss lives in this area. We know there's a few other higher, um, influential people that live in this area that probably don't, don't want a three way stop sign, or they don't want a flashing light that says, slow down.
Mm hmm.
But what's, what is it gonna take before something does happen? When someone dies, that a mother loses a child because someone ran the stop sign or, or a child come, and I know exactly what you're talking, you, you can go easily forty five, fifty miles an hour down that. And you can get an accident just like that.
Yeah.
And there's kids that, that do it.
Right.
So do we, as a city council, we need to protect the people of Poway.
Mm hmm.
We need to be able to, you know, I understand there's certain, and that's, that's an issue that needs to be brought up and the people need to be heard. Now, I don't know all the details why the city council didn't go with the, the, the recommendation. That, to me, is kind of, um, awkward, because usually they go with, they kind of always go with the recommendation of whatever they, the, uh, the planning zoning committees, they all, they always sit there and say, yeah, I like it, I, they all say, I.
Rather than we, right? Okay, Pete's got another question here.
Pete, shoot away.
All right, so here's the question. Number two, would you be willing to work with the other districts, especially District Four, such that district lines do not divide the neighborhoods?
I've had such a, a, a great experience in this, this election, because I've seen the, the lines, how the districts have been made. I've actually traveled with my car and my kids, okay, we've got to go down, down Pomerato, up Martin Coit, go back here, you know, all the areas. I'm thinking like, wow, why is it that it's split up so many different areas? Why not put the districts where they really should belong?
Mm hmm.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Now, when Pete's case is that, yeah, you have to work with the other district. As a city council member, it's not just your district. Your district affects District Four, District Two, District One. It affects every part of the city. If something's being built in District Two, I'm sure it is, just as we go down, again, we'll go down the path of the hole in the wall, it affects every single person that lives in Poway, not just one district.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So you have to work together.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
If, if you don't, you're not gonna get anything accomplished.
Yeah, I think it's, I think that, well, first of all, are you a fan of the district, uh, you know, breakdown of the city, or do you prefer the at large elections?
I don't like the at large election, and the only reason why I don't like that is this. There's so many, um, implanted, um, supporters of certain people that when you do an at large, you can, you start cutting up that pie with certain areas that really vote for certain people. Then you end up, that District Three or District Two really don't have a fighting chance.
Mm hmm.
And in case, and again, I'm not gonna go back to two thousand eighteen, but it had, at large, where everybody voted. Um, but the people that voted were in certain, you know, and with technology now, you can find out what areas actually voted.
Mm hmm.
You can find out what, what neighborhoods actually voted, you know, what household, Democrat, Republican, whatever it may be. So they, they, they can narrow it down to a T. So the at large, I'm not a big fan of it. Do I think we need to readdress the, the, um, the zone, the, the district, district lines? I, I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a fair point. Um, and when they did the twenty twenty census, they had an opportunity to change the lines, but it was more like, hey, it ain't broke, don't fix it, right? Um, but let me ask you this, I mean, you're running in District Three. What are, share with me a hot topic you're hearing from voters in District Three that you want to share with the audience.
How can my running mate change his party affiliation the day that the Republican Party gives his nomination out?
Okay, we're talking about Peter Dohoff. So, yeah, well, I want to make sure the audience knows who we're talking about. So did that really happen?
It happened.
Wow.
I got a phone call. They vetted me. They said, Tony, we got calls saying that we can't back you.
This is the Republican Party of San Diego?
I'm, I'm just, I don't want to name names.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not, it's not, this shouldn't be about Republican, Democrat, it should be about the fact that we need a voice for the people.
Okay.
And if you want status quo, the Hoffs. You want taxes, do the, you want different, me. So for me, to, to have someone change our party affiliation to get the nomination of the Republican Party and to get the backing of the mayor and the current council, and to want to keep things status quo, what does that tell you about the person that's running? Trump, how high? What do I owe you? I don't understand that. Because to me, if you're running, and he was, being a Democrat, Independent, he wasn't Republican, run as who you are, be you.
Mm hmm.
That's what the council needs. Not someone that's, you know, yes, ma'am, yeah, okay, okay, I'll do it. No, no. We've had that, and you've seen what that's gotten.
Mm hmm.
A lot of people pissed off.
Right. Well, I can understand that. You know, and just for the record, I, I invited Peter DeHoff to come on the podcast. Um, he declined.
And let's go, now you give a nice segue here. You have Peter DeHoff that doesn't want to come on and speak on a platform that, obviously, there's voters.
Mm hmm.
Um, there's people that, that watch the show. Why wouldn't you want to be able to, to tell your story or tell people who you're about?
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, half an hour, maybe, okay, you don't have to go three hours like Yuri did. You don't even have to go two hours like probably all you. Go half an hour. Here's my, here's bam bam bam.
Yeah.
But let people know who you are.
Yeah.
You know, when, when I walk around, people tell me they don't know who DeHoff is except the fact that he's backed by the current council. What does that tell me? What does that tell a voter? They want to keep things status quo. They don't want anybody to come in and ruffle the feathers. They don't want anybody to, to say, hey, you know what? Why are we doing this? Why aren't we getting this done? Now, you want to go into the money?
Sure, let's go there.
All right. So if you're a gentleman that has a party affiliation because certain people on the current board says, no, we want him, not Mr. Russo. First of all, why are you even, I mean, am I that big of a threat to certain people? I mean, I, I, I take it as a compliment.
Yeah, sure.
When I talk to the gentleman, I said, thanks, he asked, no, I'm not, I'm not jumping out, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Mm hmm.
Um, to me, it's a compliment. What I don't understand is the money in a small political local race. I know how much that I'm spending and how much I've raised. It's, it's a sizable amount.
Mm hmm.
But the money that DeHoff and Pepin and the people that are retiring are raising for these people just doesn't make sense.
Mm hmm.
I mean, we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, over a hundred thousand dollars that I've seen where they've got political packs that are, you know, putting out hit pieces on, on, on Soto, and they're putting out hit pieces on, on, I don't know if they did it for Jews or not, but they won't, I don't think they'll come after me because we're the same party, but that's all right. I, I'm a big boy.
Mm hmm.
Um, it just, it doesn't make sense. You know, I, I sat and talked in, in my mind and, and I wrote it down. I'm like, wow, why would someone spend fifteen thousand dollars to put a piece out on someone in a small political race? fifteen thousand dollars to put a piece out on someone in a small political race in Poway? We're not talking San Diego, we're talking Poway. Unless they didn't want change, unless they were worried about, oh, you know what? If we get someone in there that's going to change and start asking questions and actually be a voice for the people, we're going to have a little bit of turbulence.
I think it's exactly right. I mean, the reason that there's so much money flowing into this race, if for your race in District Three, for District One and for the mayoral race is because the city council has significant power, control, authority over what's happening in the city. And their relationships with big money interests like developers. You know, that's what clearly what's going on.
That, that brings the question, John, and you, you brought in the segue here is the majority of these, the money that's being raised are from developers and they're developers that have interest on Poway Road, have interest at the farms.
Yeah.
Have interest in, in other projects that are future projects. What are you, what are you so scared about? I mean, why is the council so worried that if we have someone that's new? Be it my district, be it the other district, or be it the mayoral race? Is there something that we should know? That, you know, swept underneath the rug, say hush, hush type thing?
Well, I mean, obviously they don't want anyone getting in their way, right? I mean, they, they want to get their development done. They don't want anyone asking questions. They don't want any, okay, well.
For why, no, but John, you just asked, why don't they want anybody to ask questions? Because to me, if you don't ask questions, I, I teach my kids, ask the question.
Right.
No question is dumb. No question.
I agree.
Ask every question. And you know what? You might not get the answer you want to hear, but at least you asked the question. And you made the person that you talked to think about the answer.
Right. But they want to get, they want to elect people on the city council to represent their interests. That's why there's so much money going into this race.
So it's not about the council for the people, it's about the council for the current council.
It's, it's about, and here's my take on it, is that those that are in power want to remain in power. Those that are seeking office, in some cases also want to get a hold of that power. And that celebrity that comes along with being on city council. And so if there is someone that's willing to back them and provide financial support, they're going to take it.
John, if you want celebrity status, Mayor Voss can go make another song and be a celebrity again. I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I saw what the council pays.
Yeah, not much at all.
They gave themselves a raise last, last city council meeting. I saw what the mayor gets paid. Are you telling me that you, your ego is that big that you want to stay in power? Or are you telling me that you've got special interest?
Yeah.
That may help you for your future? Or is it a platform for you for other political aspirations?
Well, I think all of the above and, and to varying degrees, depending on the individual that's running for office or that's currently in office.
You know, I, I, I've had a lot of conversations with people about the terms and how long and so on and so forth. You know, I think that's one reason why as, as a president, technically you only can serve eight years and then you're gone. I don't understand how, you know, you have a person that's mayor that went from one office and then he tried to run for another office, didn't win by the slightest margin, but he still didn't win. And came back to be mayor and now he wants to be mayor again. And then you have someone that ran for a school board that, you know, didn't win. Now he wants to become, you know, a city council member. And then you had, you know, someone that's been on a committee that's backed by the entire council. The entire council by the Sheriff's Association. All these guys are backing these guys, but it's funny, they're all backing from the top guy. And then you go to the next level, the next level, and it goes all the way down the pecking order to the two guys that they wanted.
Yeah, I mean, that's exactly right. That's exactly what's happening.
Somebody told me the other day, follow the money.
Oh yeah, that, that is great advice. Always follow the money.
Follow the money.
Yeah, and it is interesting and, and you know, on Friday, Amida Saraval is going to join us here on the podcast. And he's going to talk even further about this influence of money coming in from, let's just say, interest outside of Poway.
I'll tell you what it is, Community Voices, there's this new pack that came in, Community Voices, that, that raised six. Mullen, by the way, the retiring one that we're going against. His company has put over six thousand dollars in the last three months into this pack. I'd love to have someone give me six thousand dollars. I mean, I'm putting, you know, I'm self funny, obviously I have people that supported me, but we only have a certain max. But they, there's, see how there's ways how they can do the backdoor system?
Yeah.
What does that tell you? What does that tell you that they've done? Have they've done things backdoor style? Have they done things swept, sweeping underneath the rug and then we'll deal with it later if it comes up?
Well, initial reports are that Community Voices is getting funded. They're giving money to the San Diego Police Officers Association. The San Diego Police Officers Association. And then though that organization is funding some of these candidates. So it's kind of.
But you know, do you also know that in, in the Community Voices that you have Hammer Development?
Oh yeah.
You have you three or four major development that have interest in Poway?
Yes.
So if they have interest in Poway and it's just basically, if, if I had an interest in something and I had a vote on that and that certain thing, I'd have to accuse myself.
Yeah.
So they're just doing it again, the back doorway or sweeping underneath the rug here. You know, we could get the money, but no one's going to know about it now. I mean, come on, it's public right. In this day and age, everybody finds out about everything.
Well, it's interesting too, because you know, we're just little old Poway, right? And, and we've never had this kind of influence really coming into our city. But you know, everything's changed in our town. You look around, right? There's all this development going on. There's a lot of moneyed interests that are involved here. And yeah, they're trying to elect candidates that are going to support their agenda.
And their agenda would be to bring in higher density homes. Continue to crumble the infrastructure of Poway Road. I mean, it's got to stop. You heard my analogy that I, that I use at the, the town hall meeting is that you put enough air in a balloon, it's going to pop. That's what's happening down Poway Road. The infrastructure cannot hold what they want to do. It cannot happen. You cannot have a thousand homes plus being built and then all of a sudden bring in three thousand plus more cars and nowhere to park them. Their big thing is, oh, we, we'll, we'll all ride the, you know, the bus and we'll ride our, our bikes. And I don't know, I, I don't see many people riding the buses.
Yeah, I mean, public transportation in our city is, is pretty weak. And that's probably being generous. But you, you're right. I mean, there is a lot of money involved, to your point, follow the money. You know, we see that in school board races too. And because there's a lot of development interests there as well. Especially for that, that last bond measure for the school board, there was huge money being put in there by developers. So yeah, I mean, that's clearly what's happening right now. But it is interesting, I think in your race and also in District One, in many ways, it's sort of a kind of a proxy vote on what people in Poway really think of what's going on, right? Because there clearly are candidates that, you know, are endorsed by the city council. Either directly or indirectly. So there's clearly candidates that are what I'll call status quo. And then there are clearly other candidates that are challenging the status quo. You know, to varying degrees. And so it'll be interesting to see the outcome of your race, the outcome of the other District One race, and even the outcome of the mayoral race. Cause then you're going to really find out what people believe. Because for the longest time, most people are like, hey, you know, this is all good, Poway, you know, but things are different now.
And that's what I, you know, no matter what, you have to vote. You have to go out and put your voice there. You cannot come back a year from now and say, oh my God, they did this. We did that in 2018. We kind of let them do what they wanted. We got, you know, we kept things status quo. Four years later, we're in the same boat. People now are pissed. And we said this earlier, they're not just, oh, you know what? The guy in that cowboy hat, oh, the guy that, you know, the, no, they're mad. They're mad. They're mad about the development. They're mad about not being heard. They're mad about the projects that are going in certain areas. They're mad about saying, oh yeah, we're listening to you. And then in one year, and then the other year, like, no, I don't even want to hear it, let's go. You know, how do you write an email? And I, I touched on this earlier and I'm going to touch it on again. To one of your members that live in your district and tell them that they need to learn common courtesy. You're, you're a deputy mayor. You shouldn't be saying that.
So break this one down for me. I mean, who's not, I'm not, you maybe don't need to name names, but how, what's common courtesy on what?
Okay, so there was a letter that was sent out to Mr. Mullen about the fact that they invited him down to take a look what was going on at the project on Twin Lake Peaks. Hollywood project. Mr. Mullen, obviously, didn't really. And I'm going to say, I'll say politely, didn't care. He wrote a letter back and emailed back saying, again, the fact that sometimes we have to lose the battle to win the war. And one of the gentlemen went and spoke at the city council meeting. And when he went and spoke, he basically didn't even acknowledge the gentleman, didn't even sit there and look at him, kind of put his head down. Then when, one of the developer friends spoke, he waved to him. He smiled to him. So the gentleman that spoke said, hey, do I not deserve the same courtesy? As your developer friends? And when he wrote that to Mr. Mullen, said, my mother taught me to be courteous. Maybe your mother needs to teach you the same thing.
Who?
So now, and this is an email, this is what gets me is this, you know, this is public figure. In every email that you send out, everybody has a copy, has the capability of getting. Did he forget that because he's retiring or does he not care anymore because he's like, oh, well, you know what? That's why people are like, wait a minute, you're still there. Talk to these people. Give them at least a little bit of hope that you're listening to them. Don't tell them, uh, we're going to lose the battle to win the war.
Yeah, I mean, that's a fair point. I mean, because this is like Pete Neale loves this particular issue is that a city council person is representing their district. They're representing the people in their district and they need to be a conduit for the interests of the people in their district.
And not only the people, but the small businesses that are in your district. This council itself needs to be an advocate for the businesses that are in your district and in town in general. Not just the big businesses, not the big Amazons, the Walmarts and, you know, the, the, the primes and all, no, the small guys. John, I used this example when I went in, in the town hall meeting. I went and got a haircut at Great Clips. Eight ninety-nine, I said, holy cow. And not that I'm cheating, like eight ninety-nine, haircuts now are twenty-five bucks, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm like, I went in there, lady was super nice and she's like, you know, and I, I, and she didn't know I was running for city council. And the owner's like, you know, said, I can't get any of my signs up there. They're, they come up, they're threatening to find me and blah, blah, blah. And I just opened this business. I'm like, what? Yeah, I just opened up, they told me I can't have certain signs up during the daytime, blah, blah. Instead of working with a small business, you're trying to deter it? For what? So they don't succeed? And you have another empty building? These guys are, are paying top dollar on Poway Road. It's not two dollars a square foot, it's not three dollars a square foot, probably five dollars a square foot, if not more. So are you just saying, oh, hey, well, let's just get him in there, fill him in for a year, try to help out, whatever. And then a perfect example too, my, my buddy owns King's Craft.
Oh, okay.
Corey, known him a long time, great ex football player. Here's a guy that's been in business. When COVID hit, the city was all gung ho about helping out all these small businesses, right? They brought tables down, they did this, they did that. They said, oh, look at us, we, we're doing great. COVID was done, what did they do? They yanked the, the tables. They didn't give the opportunity for the small business to sit there and say, hey, you know what? We want certain things like this. They had a, a, a outside yoga exercises. And this was, I guess, from what I understand, the people that were, had it got, knew a lot of the council members knew they were kind of on the inside. They didn't care. Sorry, you can't. Time's up. You're not getting a permit anymore. Why? Why? It just doesn't make sense. You want businesses to stay in Poway, you want people to spend money in Poway, right? You don't want people to go outside of Poway. What do we have to do in Poway to stay and play?
Not much. I mean.
Not much, tell me what to do except go in the movie.
Yeah, yeah, not much. Yeah, you're right.
Our bowling alley is gone, our arcades are gone. There's only so much you can go to a bar and, and watch a sports game. Cause you know, unless you, you like to go drinking and all so on and so forth, but that's still, I mean, and even that, they don't even, I mean, there's not support, enough support for these types of business. But Amazon Prime, Amazon on the Hill, you know? The big boys with the big names, oh yeah, we'll do everything possible to get you guys in there. And I've always said this, and you know this because I, I own a small business and, and still involved in a lot of small business. It's a small business that puts the gas in our economy. It's not the big boys. The big boys, when times really are tough and, and they want to get out, they'll yank that chain so fast, so quick, say, sorry, thank you very much, bye bye. We've got tax write-off, we'll move. The small business will sit there and try to weather out the storm, just like many of them did during COVID.
Well, this, this is a good topic to kind of break down because you talk about small businesses a lot. Obviously you owned a business, was at Old Harley's in town for a long time. And you know the struggles that small business owners go through. Right. And you, and I think that's an interesting angle is, um, there's two parts of, I think, supporting small business. One is just getting the regulations and those, and the rules and the sign rules and all those ordinances is out of the way. So they can conduct business. But there's a whole other level of whether or not the city council is providing special favors or additional support that's not available to other businesses.
Let me give you an example. I've had this gentleman call me probably four or five times and I try to help him out, but there's no, I mean, he, it's, it's like he's lost. And it's the business on Pomerato Road, the Savigi, the fish market.
Okay.
They have done nothing to that business except remodel and did a basic remodel. They didn't change the plumbing, didn't change the electrical, they didn't change the sewer, nothing. They haven't gotten the permits to sit there and get it done. The city, there's a stall, instead of the city, somebody going down there and say, hey, let me see what I can do to help you out to get your business up and running. Cause you're in our town. You're what makes Poway. Now. Do they give them concessions? No. Will they give an Amazon Prime concessions? Probably. Will they give them, and I know this for a fact because my good friend Jerry Richardson, who's rest in peace, had a business in town during the days when Bower Sox and Campania were in, at the helm. They wanted businesses to come. What did they do? They gave them tax breaks. They gave them concessions. They built certain things up at the business park to say, hey, you can park your cars up here. We'll give you a storage lot. They helped businesses to come into town. Cause most of those car dealerships, and you think they're big businesses. They're still family owned and technically they're small, they've got the name Ford, they got the name Chrysler, but it's a franchise. And they still have the same, it's just a few more zeros at the end. But they still have the same issues. Unlike an Amazon debts multi-trillion dollar company, you know, it's a multi-billion dollar company, but probably trillion quote. So the concessions that they get is what helped them come to Poway. Nobody wanted to travel five miles down Poway Road to buy a car. But when Bower Sox and Campania had the vision saying, hey, we're going to do Scripps Poway Parkway. And we're going to do this, not talk, they did it. And they brought, and you know what? One by one, they brought people, because there used to be only what Perry Ford and it was a Lou Grubb Chevrolet. And then all of a sudden, you know, they start getting a few more dealerships. And it comes in, now obviously, you know, some people say, hey, you know, a lot of dealership, a lot of car stuff, but at least they, at that helm, they helped them and they kept them there. And they brought revenue to the city. But not the big boys, it wasn't the big boys. I mean, my buddy Jerry's like, Tony, I'm, you know, people think that you sell a car for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you're making fifty thousand dollar profit. You're lucky if you make a percent, a percent and a half, some kickbacks from the dealer, that's it. Now, an Amazon Prime? You know, Chick-fil-A, they went over there with, with the ribbons to cut open. I don't see them doing that for the guy at the, the fish market. I don't see him doing that for Great Clips. I sure don't see him doing it for my buddy down here at King's Craft. But Starbucks is going across the street. Guarantee they, they helped them out and a lot of ways and make. Guarantee they, they helped them out and, and a lot of ways and make sure that, that red tape was cut a lot quicker than normal businesses that wanted to open a drive-through from a back alley. I don't know, John, you try to open up something, try to open up a pizzeria that was a drive-through in there and see what happened.
I mean, yeah, I mean, because they're gonna jump in and there's a rules that are in place and they're gonna enforce some rules more strictly than others. But still, it blows my mind that the fish market there, I mean, it's, it's kind of like Oak Knoll and Pomerano. Yeah, and I heard the story a few months ago that they were struggling to get their permits approved and they have been waiting months and months. And they still don't have them?
I think it's close, I think it's close to nine months.
And that's crazy.
It was during COVID, because he contacted me during COVID. And I asked him, because I asked him questions as a business owner, I said, wait a minute, did you, you know, did you put new sewer, did you put, you know, new piping, did you move the plumbing, did you move the light? Because when you do that, now it's not just a remodel, now all of a sudden you have to get the permits, they have to come and sign off and, and, and you have to go through the process.
Yeah.
It's like, no, all we did, and it's not even, you're not serving any hot food, so they don't need any hoods or any fire extinguishers, you know, the anthill systems. Cold food and a fish. So you're selling fresh, fresh fish out of a frozen refrigerator with ice, you know, like a little showcase and Savici.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's nuts. I mean, they should, the, the permitting process should be expedited. It should make it easy for people to do business in our city. I mean, it's one thing if people are getting special favors that other people can't get. And, you know, that's probably occurring in some cases, but at minimum, I think small businesses should have minimal red tape just to get started. If they've been waiting nine months, they're still paying rent. They're still paying for utilities and they're going deeper and deeper into debt. I mean, this is, this is setting them back.
And, and you know what, do I have the answer to that situation? No, all I know is that when I get elected, that's something that I want to address, not only just for him, but the small business, why can't we help them out to succeed? Why can't we bring someone that wants to build a bowling alley with a restaurant attached to Poway instead of a raising cane? Well, why can't we bring a bowling alley with entertainment for our kids instead of well, sorry, here, Amazon Prime? Now, I'm not saying, again, it's a free world, we should have the capability of having whatever we want. But it seems to me that the people with the deeper pockets are getting things done a lot quicker than the small guy that should be Poway Road. And they should have, on Poway Road, they should have in Poway, the small businesses. I mean, when we went to the, the town hall meeting, not, not only that, the, with the main greet, one of the biggest things they said is that we actively solicit businesses to come into Poway. So if you're actively soliciting businesses to come to Poway, is there, I'd like to know, is there a threshold? Is there, is it a mom and pops? Is it a medium-sized business? Is it a big name chain? What are you soliciting? Because it seems to me it's, it's just chains.
Hmm, I mean, that's, that's definitely what we're seeing. I mean, well, even when Burger King went out, Apoyo Loco rolled in. So yeah, there's a lot of chains. I mean, the good news is there are some independents, you know, like the Hop Stop and, you know, some other places, but to your point, it is mostly chains. Let's, you, you brought up canes and let's go down this path a little bit because
Just a small path, go ahead.
Okay, and there was a, it was some interesting banter on social media, was it today and maybe even yesterday?
It was last, last night.
Last night, and it was discussion about potential of the canes, you know, chicken coming to Poway.
Raising, raising canes.
Raising canes, pardon me. And I know you were fired up about, you were excited, your kids were excited. And then one of our council members kind of chimed in and the, the conversation got interesting, so share with me what was happening here.
Real quick, and I mean, to me, they, they, I posted it on the Poway Neighbor's site, which is, and you know, I posted a lot of things.
Yeah.
I, I do a lot of, um, you know, personal posts and, and, you know, pick-me-up posts type things, exciting posts.
Yeah.
So I know that Poway Neighbor, you cannot put anything political on there. So I put that on there because my kids were actually excited, my daughter saw it on TikTok that they were bringing something into Poway. I'm like, and I had heard that, you know, a while back. And then I'm, I think, wow, and I said, Russo kids are excited that Poway even talks with Raising Cane. Everything, people chiming, oh, I can't believe it, love it, so on and so forth. Next thing you know, one of the current council members came in, says, you need to repost that because we don't have active talks with them. No one says that you're talking to them. But again, I know the process of vetting a business. You don't have a raising cane come into here unless you're actively talking to the council or to people in the city. They're not just going to the landlord and saying, hey, guess what, I want to rent that spot in the corner that's, by the way, land that's not built.
Yeah, this is gonna be at that vacant lot that was Perry Ford on Overflow, right by the Oscars Taco Shop.
Correct, and everybody thought it was a Patton Oscars when I, I didn't know, and, and you had to put the picture of that. And, you know, and I actually put down that, hey, it's right next door to Kaminsky's, because people know, because Kaminsky's been here, you know, they're, they're strong, they've been here a long time. So, yeah, you know, and to me, it's like, really? People are excited about that and then you're coming in, telling me that I need to change a post to because it's political? I didn't make it political. The person that engaged in it made it political. I wasn't rude or disrespectful. All I said is, hey, you know what, this is what people, it was funny because a lot of people were talking about it. And I had a couple of comments and then I'm like, you know what, I'm not, I'm not gonna get into this. He said, you said, I said type thing, because that's not me.
Right.
You know, and, and to me, as I always try to be respectful and kind to everyone, I don't, you know what, I, I don't have to be liked by everyone. I don't, I mean, you, you, in life, you can't be, because if you aren't, there's something wrong.
Oh, yeah.
There's something wrong. If you're liked by everyone, something's wrong.
Right.
So.
It means you have no principles.
Right. Right, I told, I tell my kids that every day, you don't have to be liked, you have to have, be respected and you give respect to people.
That's exactly right.
And what's happening, John, going back to the respect, is that the common sense factor and the lack of respect that our current council, and I'll say it, our current council shows the people of Poway is zero. You may disagree, but we're here to, you know.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just, I'm, my, my angle on this is, I've been hearing this over and over from candidates, from people on social media. Now granted, I don't go to the city council meetings that often, I haven't been, I haven't been there in like a couple of years. But, uh, yeah, this seems to be a consistent theme, that people aren't being heard, people aren't being respected. And behind the curtain, deals are being made.
I can't speak about deals being made because I don't, I don't see the paperwork. If I would have bet my last dollar, yeah. Yeah, I think things are being done and I think they're worried that whoever comes in that may not be the status quo candidate. Or let's go down the same path or the developer, you know, best friend. That things might, you know, some red flags, red tape might be coming up and it might be on the other side instead of the side where it, it really should be, right?
Let's, let's, let's move to a different topic, because we, I mean, I love everything we're talking, this is a good conversation. And again, for the audience here, all welcome to, to chime in on the live stream.
Good, all my friends, look at him, Yuri's on, look at Peter, Ed.
Let's, 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 uh, like, kind of recognize some of the folks that are watching here on the live stream and let me kind of move some things around here. And
Hey, don't forget, we gotta hit the water, John. We're gonna hit the water rate.
Ed Franklin's on, he says, the council and mayor are probably not as responsible as the city manager.
Well, let me, let me go to this, Ed, and, and Ed, you know, I see you and I respect you. The city manager is hired by the mayor. The city manager, and they gave us this little thing when we went there, he says, it's kind of like a corporation. Here's your departments and here's the head of the department, city manager, and here's the people that are underneath them and here's the ones that, you know, hired them. So to that, the city manager is responsible, but who's responsible for the city manager?
The council.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Ed, to that question, I respectfully disagree, I think the city manager is responsible. But ultimately, it's the council and the mayor that are responsible for the actions that the employees take.
Pete Neal commenting here, thank you, Tony, great answers for the two questions.
You got it, my friend.
That, um, and Yuri Boland goes, and I had a lot of questions, and yeah, Yuri did. Um, and Yuri goes on to say, hi, John, hi, Tony. And, uh, here, here's a question from Ed, what percentage of the population in Poway actually votes?
Ooh.
I know it's high.
It depends, it depends on what district you're in, because obviously I've done the numbers. The district that I'm in, I believe there was eight thousand total households that, excuse me, eight thousand votes with approximately thirty-five hundred households.
Okay.
So there's really almost a three to one or two and a half one of, of people that actually vote. So depending on the other districts, it, it's pretty high. And again, depending on what, um, election.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, in, in the presidential election, you're probably gonna get more people to vote.
Right.
I think this election here, you're gonna get a pretty good percentage of the population that votes, that probably wouldn't have voted in two thousand eighteen, uh, two thousand twenty.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's gonna be a high percentage because people in Poway are pretty active politically, they, they, they participate in democracy, as it were. So, um, I expect a lot of people are gonna be voting in this race.
I hope so.
Especially with everything that's going on.
I hope so. The only way, the only way that anything's gonna get changed is that they vote. And obviously, whatever they vote, needs to be respected.
Right.
Win, lose or draw, we have to respect it. Current council, if new council comes in, mayor, new mayor, everybody's got to respect everyone. Now, there's questions that were asked, like, how would you, you know, work with other, if you were brought on with the other, you're a four to one vote, so on. Even though you might be a four to one vote, you still, is there a voice that needs to be heard?
Yeah.
You don't just say, again, I, because four other people said, I.
Right, and we had some of that.
Yes.
You know?
We have a lot of that.
Yeah, where candidate, or exist sitting council members were against certain provisions, but changed their vote just to show unanimity or unanimity, am I saying the right word? Yeah, they're a unanimous vote in solidarity as a group. It's kind of interesting. I mean, people should, you have to stand up for your principles if you're elected, in my opinion. Here's a, another comment here, this is from Pete Neal, the city cut of the sales tax from a car is a lot more than a pound of fish.
Okay, you're, Pete, you're absolutely right, but when you're going to that, it does, see, that's my, my point that I was trying to make, it doesn't matter. Again, I'm gonna relate back to my great friend that was more of a father and a mentor to me, is that it doesn't matter if you have a dollar or if you have a million. You treat them the same.
Well, it's equality under the law, right?
You treat them the same.
Yeah, you do.
Your respect, he used to tell me all the time, when someone buys a car from me, they're a friend for life, because when they're a friend, they'll come back and they'll tell people. If you treat them with disrespect and you don't care about what they, if they had a problem with the car, because he used to tell me stories all the time. So, you know, a person was complaining about an engine, let me, you know what? He changed it because that voice meant more to him than a voice that may not come to him and say, hey, I have a great car.
Hmm, hmm. Fair point.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a couple more comments here, um, from, uh, Delena Olps. Sorry, I'm late to the party, Facebook wasn't working for me, and Delana, I know you're gonna have some really good questions.
How are you?
And, uh, again, some little comment, comments amongst the folks on the live stream. Pete Neal further goes on further, used to be a used car dealership, I bought my Dodge van from that place in nineteen eighty-two.
Peter, you've been around, I've been out here since seventy-eight, so he knows, yeah.
Okay, so, uh, and Delena goes on to say, the city manager is the council scapegoat, you're a hundred percent right. And Ed Franklin says, my point was more that he manages the personnel. So anyways, thanks for everybody for sharing these questions, we still have a lot more to talk about. So keep bringing your thoughts and questions, we'll get them on here as best we can. While we're trying to do the live stream and I want to make sure everyone knows this is Tony Russo, so we'll put his name on the screen. So let's totally shift and I want to talk a little bit about water, because you've talked about that in the campaign. You know, on your, I think it was on your, um, declaration when you turn in your paperwork. You know, you were talking about the, what's your take on the whole water infrastructure and the, the rope water incident we had?
Do we need to fix it? Yeah.
Yeah.
We knew that a long time ago. I remember if, if I go back to two thousand eighteen, someone said, we've got gray skies that are ahead of us. So they knew the issue was at hand. What I don't like, the way they went about doing it, again, they swept it underneath the rug during a period when people are in COVID crisis. COVID crisis, where people were worried about life or death, their family being safe. Did they give the people the opportunity to really share a voice? They said they sent out the proxies that, you know, where you sat and, you know, you protest and so on and so.
So we're talking about the water rate increase.
We're gonna do the water rate and then we'll go into the water infrastructure.
Okay.
Because it all ties in, it all ties in.
All good.
It all ties in. They said they needed a water rate increase because they had to pay for the infrastructure for, for the, the new renovations. When I raise, okay, let's, I'm gonna go back to layman's term, when I raise a, a price for a pizza or a beer, I don't give it a raise for four years, say, hey, I'm gonna raise it from a dollar to two fifty and hope that everybody's gonna be able to pay it, because now I'm forcing people to buy it, right? That's exactly what the city did. They went in there instead of saying, hey, we have, we need water rates to be increased. We need this money to, to pay for certain projects, we need to fix the infrastructure. Why not do it in increments? Why not give the opportunity for people to actually voice their opinion, not during a COVID crisis, but afterward? Why would you, it's like they said during a city council meeting last week, we did not give ourselves a raise because it was during COVID. So we didn't think it was justifiable to have a raise in two thousand twenty.
Hmm, okay.
But they deemed it justifiable to raise the water rates by forty plus percent over the next four years. I don't know, John, my dad, rest in peace, had forty-some citrus trees. Forty.
Yeah.
Do I still have forty?
No. It's expensive.
Very expensive.
Yeah.
I got three little kids. They shower, the water is expensive, I pay almost triple than what I paid a year and a half ago or so. I looked at the bill, I mean, you sit there and, I mean, the water, it's like, wow, I use the same units, but now I'm paying, you know, a hundred some dollars more. I understand, again, I understand the philosophy of business that we need to generate the income to pay for certain things. But it shouldn't have been a sweeping action at one time during, again, a COVID crisis.
Well, because it gives, it makes it difficult for people to go to city council meetings and voice their opinion when they're doing it on Zoom, you know, it's, it's a different vibe, right?
John, come on, you saw everybody's going, doing, you know, we were doing live interviews on, on Zoom. And first of all, you can't hear the people, second of all, most people don't know if you're doing it at seven o'clock, six o'clock, most people, especially in city council meetings, I mean, come on.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it, it, it makes it hard for the people to voice their opinion when they can't face them face to face.
I'm gonna go back, I don't mean to interrupt you. Common sense.
There you go.
Did it prevail? Nope. Did they use it? Nope.
So what? This is just amazing, there's so many things going on here, I want to shift to another topic, crime. Crime is up all over the place, what's your take on this?
Crime is up because you have more people.
Right.
Obvious, if you take people away, crime's gonna go down, but we, as a city, as the council members, always say that, look, we have the safest city, and we know we have the safest city. But is that your number one priority? Because everyone that talked during that town hall meeting all said, safety, 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 and it went, came to me, I said, no, not safety. Do I believe we need safety? Absolutely, we've got one, one of the best safest city around. But is that should be our number one priority? No, the crime that happens in Poway happens. Do I think there could be things done to deter certain crimes? Yeah, better lighting. Instead of having our police officers stay at certain areas at times, maybe travel and do their job more. You know, there, there's a lot of things that could be.
Well, if crime is not the number one issue that a lot of other candidates are saying, what is the number one issue? I mean, you talked, I think I know what your answer is, but tell me, what's the number one thing?
Well, you could probably put it all together in one with the lack of transparency, the honesty, the lack of, 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 says right there, the voice. That people aren't getting the voice heard. Water rates, people are upset, they're just spending more money. Inflation's through the roof and we're spending more money. Gas prices are high. We're spending more money. If I can't afford my water rate, John, what does the city do?
Cut you off?
No, they give you a red tag.
A red tag.
So they, they charge you ten percent of your late fee. So if you owe a hundred bucks, we use the lack of number, they add another ten dollars. If they have someone come out and actually put a red tag on, they charge you an extra, I think it's fifty or whatever it may be, for that person to come out. Now, if I couldn't afford a hundred, now you've added another ten and you added another fifty. Now I can't afford a hundred and sixty, right?
Right.
Now all of a sudden, they shut you off. They add another shut off fee. So now how is that person supposed to survive? What happens to senior citizens where they're on fixed income? What happens to a family that has four or five kids that are a limited income? And again, in California, and you know this, John, we talked about this before, you can make a hundred thousand plus and still be below the poverty level. Does the city, you know, do they, do they not see that? Do they not want to help the people that are in need? We can go into senior center too. And that's to me, you know, a thirteen million dollar bust and that whole deal. Like, I think that money could have been spent and made helping the seniors? I don't even know. Do we actually have a senior center still?
I'm not sure.
I don't think it is.
I know that they.
Community center. It's not called senior center anymore.
But I think, again, my understanding is, is that it's supposed to be co-use. Community center, senior center, one facility. But I'm not privy to the schedule at that, at that building.
You know, from what I've done in my research is that we had X amount of money that we could have had given to us by the state of California prior to knocking down that building. It would have been a, the old saying, whether you had a question, millions of dollars falling in our pocket. Actually, it was, I don't know the exact amount, but there was, it was a good amount coming into our pocket prior to us knocking that building down. But instead, they knocked the building down and we lost that grant. So by losing that grant, it's kind of like the old, I've had friends that talk about they try to get in on the list for low income housing. You get on that list, it's sometimes takes years before you get that house.
Yeah, for sure.
So it's the same thing with this grant. Once you lose that grant and you want to go back and reapply with the state, you're lucky if you're ever going to get anything back. So who uses, I mean, we were supposed to have people up there that are supposed, and again, they are smart people. I'm not saying that. But it was a common sense approach. If we lose four hundred thousand dollars, lack of number, by knocking this building down two months early, why didn't we wait and say, okay, let's get this, continue to have our grant, go in there and build it, help the seniors and have a little piggy bank that we can do stuff with the seniors? You know, rest in peace, my mom and dad, you know, and, and, you know, I've seen a lot of people that call, contact me, say, Tony, can you find me a place to live? I can't afford, you know, do you have a room for rent yet? You can't do it. I mean, the seniors are struggling. And, you know, they, they built affordable housing for seniors there, but do you see how quick that filled up?
Oh, yeah. Like in instant, right?
Not like across the street.
Right.
I don't have to say much about that. I think people understand what I said. You know, so.
Let's, uh, let's, let's chat a little bit about, one of the things that I really enjoy about you is you're on social media all the time, sharing the love, sharing the positive energy. Your children are always there with you. I mean, tell me a little bit more about your family life and what you're up to personally, just outside of the campaign.
Well, you know this, John, my number one, I don't, this is not top priority. My kids are top priority. Watching them smile, teaching them what's right and wrong. Seeing them grow. And I think I mentioned this in two thousand eighteen about having a legacy. You know, I was fortunate enough that my father and my mother left me a legacy to carry on to my kids.
Nice.
And I, I'm doing this because I want to make Poway a better city for the people, for the families, and for the kids that want to stay here and have a family for themselves when they have an opportunity to do so. Not to move away. Not to say, hey, I can't afford it, or, you know, there's nothing to do in Poway, so I'm going to go live in near Mesa or Escondido because they have things to do. So going back to the positive energy, it takes more to be angry and mad than it is to laugh.
That's true.
And love. I mean, I tell this to everybody. I mean, you can complain about things. And again, I know we complained about certain things on there, but I look at it with a grain of salt because if someone really wants to change, if they really want to do good, my mom said this to me, and I'll never forget it. If you have the heart to do it, you can do it.
Nice. I remember from our two thousand eighteen conversation that your mother means so much to you. I mean, just kind of share with us some of your memories of your mom and why she means so much.
My mom was, she was a staple of Poway. I mean, she, she rode the bus. She walked Poway Road when we had the restaurant and the Walmart shopping center and went to Sprouts and to Bonds and bought groceries and fresh produce. She, she loved everyone that she talked to. It didn't matter. I remember like mom, you know, she'd always say, no, it's okay. You know, you talk to them, you give them the love. Even sometimes they may not like, you know, because not, again, you can't be liked by everyone.
Right.
But you have to show the respect. My mom was a head chef at the Officers Club for thirty years.
Oh, wow.
And the honor that you get when you have chain of commands and the commander in chief, per se, of the, of the base, gives you a coin. And they usually don't give them out to civilians. They give you a coin. It's, it's a, and I think a lot of the military and veterans out there, it's a coin that shows the respect of the fact that we appreciate you. And my mom didn't get one, not two, but three.
Wow.
Yeah. And I remember when my mom retired, there was commanders that came to her retirement party at O'Harley's. And it was, I mean, it was, she worked at the Officers Club. So that's, you know, Top Gun, the whole day. Back then, back in the day, the Officers Club was the place where people went, you know, not only for officers, but people from the outside went. And it was kind of the, the distillery east for teenagers, remember? So, you know, there was a lot of stories, but, you know, going back to my mom, now she just, everybody called her mama. Man, I wish she, if I could just have one thing, John, one thing, just to have her see my kids, you know, me crying. I don't want to cry.
Okay.
I don't want to cry.
All right.
Because I, that's not weakness. And I tell my kids, crying is not weakness. Crying shows that you care. And I miss my mom every day, every day. Do I miss my dad? Yeah. But I don't, my mom, there is not a day that I don't go by that I don't think about my mom or look at her picture and, and have a smile. She used to always say to me, like, in Italian, andiamo. That means, come on, let's go. We don't have time to fool around. And she was sixty nine years old when she passed away of cancer. And up to the day that she died, she still came into the restaurant. Two weeks prior to her death, she always went in there because she loved seeing the people. She loved seeing the smiles on the people's.
Nice.
Yeah.
It's very special.
Yeah. And, you know, again, my kids didn't get an opportunity to meet her. My daughter Stella was named after my mom, Stella Marie Antonin. We were pregnant when my mom had passed away. She was pregnant for six months. So my mom knew about Stella. My little guy Luca, he was born on my mom's birthday.
Perfect.
So, you know, it's like, wow, you know, and every time I look at my kids and I see there's always, you know, especially my daughter and my, my little guy, like, obviously, my middle one is a mini me. It looks like, but you know, there's that, that, you know, I see the, the, the happiness go lucky. And my little guy Luca with my mom, I see the, you know, the smartness that my daughter had, and I see the, the genuine careness. My middle guy, he has the angelic eyes. He doesn't argue. He just, he's like, he has a smile. He says, okay, Dad.
How long have you lived in Poway?
Since nineteen seventy eight.
Really?
August, yep. My dad moved out here in August. Actually, my dad moved out prior. We moved out in nineteen seventy eight, August. And I believe if you go back, it was the year PSA had the airline that crashed. I believe it was August of that year.
Yeah, that was seventy eight.
Yeah. And I remember because my mom, we had just gotten, she was, my mom didn't like flying, you know?
Yeah.
And she had all her family back east and in Italy. And she was like, and my dad actually was working for PSA at the time.
Oh, wow.
As a machina. So, yeah, it was nineteen seventy eight, but he came out earlier because he, he wanted to find a job. And he went to Arizona mid-July, no way. It's at a hundred and twenty two degrees. Went to Del Mar, loved it. Because it reminded him, obviously, the ocean and all that. But Del Mar at that time was still, you know, pretty expensive.
Of course.
And then he came into Poway and, and I have videos of him, us talking and having fun. But he, Poway reminded him of home. Where he lived in Italy. He knew Ross Rizzo, the winery. He made wine with him. They made olive oil. They butchered pigs and cows.
Wow.
They did things that just, you know, that you did back home. So when he moved to Poway, he said, this is where I'm going to die. Because I always asked my dad, I said, Dad, why, I mean, why, why stay in Poway? Why don't you go somewhere else after, you know? No, this is right. This is where I'm going to, you know, it reminds me of home. And he had the grape trees and all it. So, yeah, it, it was his memory of, even though he could have went back to Italy, everything changed, but he brought it here.
Nice. You know, you're, you're, the length of time you've been in this city, to me, is fascinating in your race because a lot of people know you. You know, so, and I think that's going to really help you in this race.
John, you know, it's not about popularity. I mean, obviously, people do know me. And like I said earlier, not everybody's going to agree with me. Some may be, you know, a certain affiliation to party and they, my thing is this. Let's just do the right thing. Let's bring common sense back. You want a voice, I'll be the voice. But not for me, for the people.
Well, well, speaking of voices, we have some more questions.
Let's go.
So let's, uh, let's go back to the, to the, to the live stream audience here. And let's see what we got. Wow, now everything's lighting up here. So we got a lot going on. So where do we leave off? It was.
Mike Devine, he knew my mom real well.
So here, Delana Hope goes on to say, Kalen Frank and John Mullen said in two thousand eighteen elections, there were gray skies ahead. So they knew something was going on.
Yeah, I brought that up, yeah.
And she goes on to say, water rates are a tax. These council members wanted to raise and they always increase our rates, then pass a council raise. Interesting angle.
It is. Again, you know, they just passed it. And again, they, they stated in the last council that they didn't have, they didn't want to do it during a COVID year, per se, with two thousand twenty. But again, they raised the water forty plus percent over four years. And not just one year. It was, you know, a swipe of, let's just forget, let's put it underneath the rug because most people, you know what? We did it. Sorry. You know, and we, you know, people complain about it now, John, but they're like, oh, you had an opportunity. This is what I hear. They said, you had the opportunity to protest it. No, they didn't. You made it hard in, in a COVID year. Who had the opportunity to come down to city council? Nobody. To go online and, and raise a hand. Because I've seen my kids, and maybe I'm going off track here, but I watched my kids do live Zoom interaction school at home. You're better off watching Sesame Street, teaching them on Sesame.
Yeah, that was a waste.
Yeah. So tell me how that's going to help the city council when you're having all these people try, you know, a lot of these people aren't computer savvy that, that wanted to protest. They, they didn't know what to do, raise a hand, whatever it may be. Maybe now it's different because two years later. But I still think that they didn't give them the opportunity.
Yeah. It was a crazy time to enact that. Let's go on down this, down the line here. And, yeah, Mike Devine there. I don't, I don't see the other half of his. And by the way, Mike Devine is not banned on this podcast. So we welcome Mike.
I've known Mike a long, you've known my family a long time.
Yeah. So I know Mike always likes to point that out, that he gets banned on some Facebook pages. Tony, this is also from Delana Hope. What's your view on the seniors and our lack of a senior center now? And I think you already addressed that.
Yeah, I did address that. And I'm, I'm, you know, an advocate, obviously, for small business seniors and, and what they've done with it. They need to bring revenue back to the senior center. Or actually, they call it a community center. They don't call it a senior center. But they need to bring back the senior center to help the seniors, give them something to do.
See, I was unaware of that. I, I knew the sales pitch was that it was going to be co-use. But apparently the seniors aren't there. I was unaware.
They're trying to get them back in. They got, I believe, a hundred thousand dollar grant from the seniors on that. They're trying to generate income. But you know, it's like anything, if your business is not working, let's find someone that knows how to make it work. And let's bring them in to generate.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, bring in the right people. They know what they're doing. Oh, here's another comment here. And this is from Brave Sailor.
All right, who's Brave Sailor? Here we go.
Hi, Tony. With Poway being so close to so many business parks and the I fifteen, is it time to give up on the utopian dream of Poway being the city in the country?
I, you know, I never give up. That's one thing. In life, when you give up, then you just throw in the towel. So is it going to change, Johnny? Things change. But we need to make it for the better and for what people want. Business parks, when they built that, that was a plus. That was a revenue generator. That brought a lot of people that didn't know where Poway was. But now we're kind of going off track. We're kind of like forgetting about, you know, the business park and bringing it down Poway Road. And again, I mentioned earlier, the infrastructure is not there. So will it change? Things are going to change. Do I want it to change? I want the city and the country to still be there. I still, you know, I still enjoy hanging my clothes outside with the sunlight just to dry them. I do. My daughter goes, Dad, why don't you have a dryer? I'm like, you have the sun. But you know, John, I'll tell you that. The reason why I do that gives me, it reminds me of when my mom went out and did that. And when I go out to the backyard and do it, it gives me that thought. It's like to kind of say, you know what? It's nice, you know, and brings back memories of my mom. And I think that's what people need to realize too, is that, I think a lot of them did during COVID, to realize it's not all about, you know, who's got the most or the ego and all that. And I think that's one reason why you see a lot of the constituents and the, and the citizens of Poway upset.
Let's go on a couple more comments here. And this is from Mike Devine. And he goes on to say, the water infrastructure rope doesn't ring true. How can rain runoff color ten million gallons of a clear well and come out the taps with brown color?
Well, wait, wait, I got to answer this one. Mike, you can ask Peter DeHoff because he actually drank the brown water as a stunt. And to me.
Well, I remember Mayor Voss did that too.
Ah, you know what? Here's the thing. You tell me that you're going to drink brown water. Did anybody follow him home to see if he had the runs for three days?
Yeah.
You're laughing about it.
Yeah, I'm sure no one did. Yeah, 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 yeah.
You're drinking brown water.
Yeah.
And you're telling everybody it's safe. But again, another mistake will go on. Did they help the small businesses when they had that issue?
Oh, yeah, they got screwed.
Screwed. They didn't help them at all. They're like, sorry, you know, but it was not our problem. What do you mean it's not your problem? You're, you're supposed to be the person in charge. The council's supposed to be in charge. You're supposed to help these small businesses. Now, they can't boil water because they can't cook pasta in brown water. No one's going to go eat in an area or drink water that's got brown. I don't care if Peter Hoff, DeHoff drank it. I don't care if Mayor, I don't care if the whole council drank it. No one's going to do it. Because my mom always said, what you see first is what your stomach thinks. So if you look at something in food or drink and it looks nasty, it could be the best tasting thing in the world, but your mind says, uh-uh.
Wow.
Again, common sense.
Common sense. Here's a couple more things here from Mike. He goes on to say, we're, were we fooled? Uh, no. Uh, but it made it untenable to oppose. So.
Well, okay, let me, let me go back to Mike on that one. Mike, so you're stating that we, it was unattenable to oppose. We couldn't oppose the fact of a forty percent rate increase because we needed to rebuild the infrastructure. I can't agree with Mike on that because if we needed that, we could have went and readdressed the issue year by year. And when I get voted in, that's one of the things that I've told a lot of the constituents, like, wait a minute. We can go and readdress it. People say, oh, you can't change it. No, you can. If you really want to change something, you can turn that page back. You may not be able to get last year's rate, but we could look at it and say, wait a minute. And I'm going to bring a point in fact that they touted on the last city hall meeting how they're under budget now with this new infrastructure that they're building. And they showed all these pipes and they're saying, oh, we're under budget by seven, eight percent. We're saving hundreds of thousands of dollars. Are you giving that money back to the people?
No, no way. Yeah.
Because I get, I won't guarantee anything, but my gut tells me by the time this project is done, I don't know if they're going to be under budget. Because what they did in Spolea Road, they thought they were under budget, but they forgot to build, what, ninety feet of wall?
Right.
Who made that one?
Hey, have you seen the wall on the backside of the Fairfield project?
The, where on, on Poway Road?
Yeah, well, you're the, where the Poway Bowl was on the backside. That wall was. Yeah. Well, you're the, where the Poway Bowl was on the backside. That wall is taller than the houses are.
John, that's what I'm saying is that someone needs to go and put, and I know Mike's going to come in and chime in about developer. The developer that put the plans to the city council says, hey, we're going to do this. All of a sudden, if they changed it and no one's there to say, hey, stop, whose fault is it? They did the same thing at the farms. Did you see the houses? What did they, we talked about that earlier. Not just one house, just three or four houses that have those walls up. Why would I want to have a two-story house looking into my pool if I want to go out? Well, I probably wouldn't go out naked. You might, but you, you, you know what I'm saying? John is like, it's, it's again, common sense. The neighbors didn't spend millions of dollars to, to buy a home there or, or thought they had a golf course for the rest of their life. And all of a sudden now, guess what? You're not having a golf course. You've got two-story house that someone gets to watch what you're doing 24 hours a day.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's what's happening with, with the Fairfield. That's what's going to happen. Even on, on, on Twin Peaks. I mean, there's so many different angles that they're all trying to play. And again, once they get it done, once they start, it's a lot harder, the city says, to go back in and change things. No, you can change it. If you put your foot down, don't blame Sacramento. Blame the city.
Yeah, the city definitely has control over what's happening here locally. Gosh, there's a bunch more here. Uh, Delena says, Peter didn't drink tap water. He drank water that ran through his expensive water filter system. And pretty sure Voss is on well water. Okay. She says, both of them basically lied. So again, zero transparency. Mike says, did we need to rebuild the infrastructure?
Are you asking me that, Mike?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's address that one.
You know, was it outdated? Yeah.
Yeah. The water infrastructure. Yeah. It's like over 50 years old, right?
I mean, we, we need, I mean, it's like anything. I mean, your pipes in your home after a while or already, Mike, you know this as a developer, when they built the homes in 68, the, the copper piping they put in and water is only to last a certain amount of time before you start getting holes and before it starts leaking. So yeah. But again, we go back to common sense. Do we need to raise the water rates in such dramatic fashion during a COVID crisis where most people were worried about saving their loved ones and their own lives and buying toilet paper?
You know, one, one of your competitors has, has, is suggesting that there might be a water bond on the horizon. That they'll have to borrow money to help pay for this infrastructure improvement.
I don't know. There's always that possibility. And to me, when, when they say they're under budget now, it'd be pretty hard to say you want to bond when you're saying that you're under budget.
Right.
You know, and, and if you really wanted to bond, you should have done it when interest rates were pretty low.
Yeah, this is a bad time now. Yeah.
We talked about that with the school bond. I mean, I mean, you know, you, you, you got interest rates that back then that were, you know, very, very low, historic lows. Now we're at, you know, three times the amount. So again, common sense.
There you go. Okay. So, uh, Mike goes on to say, Poway used to have a requirement that no wall could be over six feet. What happened on the Fairfield project? I mean, it's definitely higher than six feet, that wall.
If I remember it correctly, somebody said it was 14 feet tall.
That it's taller than the rooftops of some of those homes.
So, uh, Mike, again, um, it goes down to when they submit their plans to the city and the city stamps it. And it says X amount. If it says 14 feet there, right? If I'm the city council member, I'm like, wait a minute, 14 feet? And there's someone that lives right behind us and it's only got a, a eight-foot setback? If you're doing that, what are you going to do to help the neighbors? What are you going to give them in return to make them happy? Right now they're doing zero.
That's got to be tough if you're on the backside of that. Uh, I mean, it's just got to be awful. Yeah. And I think they're using part of it as a retaining wall. So there's like a, like, it's almost like a dam, you know, holding up all that dirt. So.
Again, they went down.
Yeah.
You know, the, the grading, I mean, these guys are engineers. Mike knows this. These guys are engineers. They're, they're smart people. If you had, had the developer that's coming in and you're working with the same developer that's made mistakes on other projects, why we continue to give these developers the green light? Is it the money that's coming in to certain pockets? Is it money coming into certain special interest? That's a big question that.
Yeah. I mean, that's, you know, bringing up all the money in the race. And those are fair questions to ask. Mike goes on to say, I had so many clients that wanted to exceed that fence or wall limit. Uh, no way until now. There's a couple other comments here, I think from Delena. And she goes on to say here, yeah, it's a multi-generational community center. The senior center dissolved and reorganized as the friends of the senior center. So there's no designated senior center anymore. She goes on to say, that's the kind of heart our council needs. People serving the community from the heart, not to climb the political ladder. Well, if there's any candidate that's coming from the heart, it's you.
You know, I, and I'll say this right here, my aspiration is not to sit there and go to county border supervisors. Mine is not to go to, to Sacramento. Mine is to stay here and make sure my kids and the people of Poway have a city to have fun in, to play in and to enjoy with their families.
Right on.
Yeah.
So you know, we said we're going to go three hours like Yuri, but we're already at two.
Oh, we're two. We're, we're going to be almost done.
We're at an hour and 56.
Take a couple more questions and we'll.
Yeah. So this is all good. Okay. So right now there's no more new questions. And if I missed someone's question, forgive me. I mean, I got a whole scrolling list of them here. What have we not covered? I mean, that's really, you're passionate about, what do you want to fix in this city that we haven't talked about yet?
You know, we talked about water. We talked about tra- traffic is horrendous. We got to figure out, we have to come up, put our minds together and say, hey, what can we do to ease the traffic? Remember for every minute that you're spending on a road with traffic is one minute less you're spending with your family.
No, for sure. Yeah.
You know, and people after a while, I mean, that's why you have road rage. That's why you have, I mean, I've seen it on Poway Road. People get pissed off. I mean, there's guys that are doing traffic. They're not even, they're using the signs. They're just, we're waiting down and you know, it's half an hour to, to go on the other side, to go two lights. Okay. And, and again, Mike, you might be able to answer this question. Common sense tells me this. We had construction in Spola Road. I don't know, ongoing 10 years, but they said it's almost done. I don't know who decided to come up with that, that, um, planning and engineering of those walls and the, the look of them, the.
Oh, you're talking about going up the hill from Twin Peaks to the high school?
Going all the way up by your house. Yeah. Coming up here. Yeah. I know they needed a sidewalk. I love that. And I think all the kids love it.
Yeah.
But who made the idea that you have a chain link, black fence, a white fence, a cemented wall fence, a block wall fence, um, a stone fence? I thought this was supposed to be, you know, we come together and communicate or that maybe because it's a different part of town that the neighbors did as they pleased, which I don't think so. I think it was kind of like, okay, wait, we'll, we'll make you happy by doing this. If the city wants to do certain things, it shouldn't be conformed all the way up.
Yeah. You expect the same rule applies to everyone. I mean, there's one particular property owner there that built a wall on the edge of their property, which is fine. But it's really tall. It's got to exceed if, if the rule is six feet. Is that the rule?
It looks like a combine. It looks like, I mean, it looks like that she is a compound or whoever it is. I don't know if it's she or he, but they're protecting their property.
Yeah. Well, again, I, I, as a private property owner, I, I understand, I, I support them. But if there is a rule that it's supposed to be six feet max, then it should be the same.
As a private property owner, am I allowed to have loud excessive music past 10 o'clock at night?
Of course not, because that would be disturbing other properties.
It's my, it's my private, I mean, I'm in my house. Why, I mean, why can I sit there and blast the radio and do what I want?
You can't do that.
You see, you see, it's common sense.
It's common sense.
So common sense tells me that if the city can't come to you and say, hey, you're not doing the right thing, but they're allowing things to happen, then someone in the city is not doing their job. Very simple. Common sense tells me you talk to the people. If they want a wall, why? What's happening? Is there a reason? Is it because you don't like the traffic sound? Cause that's probably what it is.
And then coincidentally, there are political signs on that wall.
So that's, yeah, that's Boston's crew.
Supporting our, our mayor and, uh, and the candidates that are kind of aligned with the mayor.
And I, I have no, I have no qualms with any of them. Uh, my thing is, is it's, you have to, you, you want to play fair. You do the, the right thing. You don't, you know, I have signs and, and this neighbor have signs and, and, but I ask every single homeowner. I've, I've had the city say, you can't have this on Circle K. Wait a minute. Wait a minute. I know the owner of Circle K. He gave me permission, but they took my signs.
Really?
Oh, yeah. And they said that it wasn't, um, five feet in, but they failed to realize when they measured that the sidewalk is seven and a half, eight feet long, wide already. So they measured from the end of the side, in the, the inner portion of the sidewalk, five feet in. So really it went 15 feet.
Right.
And I'm like, I, I laughed. I said, really? Come on. Who, who, I mean, who's coming up with this stuff? But I, you know, it, it's one of those things. It's like the signs that get moved, but that's, that's happens in a political side of it thing, you know? Also my signs are missing and what are you going to do? You just go out and get more and put them in there?
Yeah. The whole sign thing is nuts. But I, but I saw the, uh, I saw your signs and, and I saw them on business property. And I thought to myself, I bet Tony knows them. Cause you've been in town for so long. So have you seen in town that there are now negative signs against candidates?
Yes.
And I've seen it for both school board and mayor.
Yes. And I've also seen it for, oh, that's right. School board. That's right. Uh, freedom. I don't. If you want to have a forum to say something, say it. But by putting signs out and then making someone uh, you know, put an X on it. You know, I saw even the one that they had at, at the, uh, the project with Voss that had, and I, and I posted it.
Yeah.
But it's a, he, it didn't, he just said, he did this. Didn't say he was in, you know, I don't like it that when they put names on it. I don't think that's right because my kids see that.
Right.
He said, Dad, why are they putting that name on? I'm like, ah, just, you know, you know, my daughter, she's really into this. She loves, you know, learning new things and.
So here's another, here's another comment here. And this is from Delena. Mike, uh, the council and Bob Manis just not doing their due diligence to hold the developer to the standards that they should. They abandon so many ordinances. Um, so again, I think, you know, that's the common comment that we've been talking about, right?
You know, it, it goes back to, you know, we come up to Espola Road, we go down Twin Peaks Road, we go down Poway Road. The morning time traffic, I dropped my daughter off at, at Twin Peaks. I go opposite Espola Road. It's six miles deep. It's going up towards, uh, um, the 67, all the way up Espola.
Yeah.
We have to fix it. You know, these kids are going to school. What are we doing?
Well, you know, one of the things that intrigued me when McNamara, Kevin McNamara was talking about the farm way back when we did the podcast with him is he was going to install lights on a Spola Road that had real-time synchronization to let the traffic flow through. Now, these obviously haven't been installed yet. Hopefully they will be. We'll see. But that kind of technology could be brought to Poway Road, couldn't it?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And the basic technology of common sense of having someone out there that's a worker to turn around and have a sign that says, go. Instead of a light that's blinking over here. And you've got to stop and go, stop and go, stop and go. Why not? There's no other traffic coming in from the other side. And if there is, a guy with the sign would say, okay, stop, bring the other person in. So, I mean, that, that goes back to common sense.
Right.
We go back to the, maybe sometimes we have to go back to the old school way of, of thinking about things and saying, oh, we can't use always a high-tech technology because we're not even using that. You're actually right. We can use lights to have signals and, and they're synchronized where they let traffic flow easily.
So many, I mean, this is, yeah. Yuri goes on to say, two hours and 55 minutes. That's how long it was.
We know.
And we're, we're now at two hours and four minutes. So we're getting there.
We're, yeah, we have a couple more minutes when we're done. Cause you know what? I love you, John, but my kids, I gotta make sure they're, in a few more minutes, we'll sit there and.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, um, yeah, this is your mailer. Yeah. So, um, has this gone out or it's good?
That's, uh, the first of the mailers that went out.
Well, there, there you are, right there. You and your kids. You can show the audience.
And everybody, I mean, you know, people go on my Facebook page, you know, a lot of friends I have. And again, you know, I, the Russo for council is something that I'm passionate about for the people. It's not self-serving. I, I don't need, I, I don't need to sit there and toot my horn and say, oh, guess what? I'm, I'm city council. No, I want to make sure that I'm representing the people and give them a voice. I know I keep saying that, but it's what people want now. They need to have someone that's not afraid to stand up to, if the mayor gets back in there or Ms. Frank or Barry Leonard. I'm not afraid to, I'm not afraid to, I mean, you know me, John.
Yeah.
I'm not afraid to stand up to anyone, you know?
I, that I can, I, I'm assured of what I know of you. Um, I mean, you're, you're going to say what's on your mind. Um, you're going to speak truth to power, right? Yeah.
And sometimes, you know what? The truth hurts. Believe it. It's, it's hurt me before, but it makes you think about what's right and what's wrong. Cause the easy path, and we know this, the easy path in life is always to do the easy thing that no one really is going to say anything about. Right?
Right, right.
So when I, you know, I use this example, I hate going back to my kids, but you, if, if we don't teach our kids that, hey, if you lie and you think you get away with it, what are they going to do as they get older? They're going to lie. So it all comes back to, you think you might get away with it now, but I always tell my daughter and I tell my kids, it could be six months, it could be a year, it could be two years. But someone's going to find out. And now these are petty lies. But now we go back into the political scene. We go back to the current council. Maybe they're all telling the truth. Like they said, I highly doubt it because I've seen firsthand some of the lies that they came out. And we even go back to the post that we talked about today about raising kids. Like, come on, you, you don't say that you didn't make that a, a political statement that she didn't do it, when you actually stated that I should repost it. So don't, don't play, and I, and I have utmost respect for it. Don't play the victim. Because if you're not, I didn't do anything. All I did was post something that my kids were happy. You know? And I think that's what happens with a lot of the council members. They want to, um, sometimes say, oh, you know, not me. We didn't do it. Sorry. How about those Potrades, John?
I was just thinking about that. Yeah.
I know. Cause you know, I was, I was telling the guys like, if the Potrades win, I won't, I guarantee you, John, you're going to sit there and not have the podcast on Tuesday. I didn't, my mind, like, wait a minute, come on. We're going to have it during game seven?
Yeah, there, there way.
I would tell you no.
Yeah. I mean, what a fun ride it's been. Um, and yeah, I mean, they brought the whole city of San Diego, the whole county came together.
John, let me, I want to tell one story. And you know, when we go back to when we had the fires, I think it was 2000, was it 2003?
It was, uh, 2003 and 2007.
Yeah. The, the big one was, oh, in 2000, I think it was 2000, the one that we lost a lot of homes.
It was, that was the 03 fire.
03 fire.
Witch Creek.
Yeah.
I think.
That's when all, when all the fires kind of joined together and then it.
No, that was a cedar fire. It was 03 and Witch Creek was 07.
Right. And, and 03 was the one that, that they all came together. And I remember the, uh, Terragoneta Mountain glowing at night.
Oh, yeah. That was crazy.
One thing I remembered during the, the time that the city was having a disaster. The current coun- the council that was there at that time, Caponia, Bowersocks, all these, they came together and they did things for the small businesses. They did things for the people.
Nice.
I remember that. And I had Old Harleys and we were kind of a, a, a hub for all the firefighters and the police officers. They came in, they ate, they drank. It's that, I mean, they got, you know, they get with plaques on. But I remember going back then, it's like, you know, those were the times that the people trusted the council. The council came in and patronized, they, they went in and, and were, were customers of mine. They came into my restaurant. They came in on a Saturday night and listened to the music, the bands. What happened? I don't see any of that going on. There's one place in town, most of them go to. And, and I respect that gentleman too. But let's bring back stuff where people enjoy it. Let's bring Poway back to where we have fun again. And smile and not just talk about what's on Poway Road. Cause when we bring stuff that people want. Cause when we bring stuff that people want and we make people, we, we have the people happy again, what happens, John?
Oh, good times, right?
They don't start thinking about the negative things.
That's right.
They sit there and say, hey, man, look at it, this is happening. We have sporting events, we have things that are happening, we have, when powderies are doing well, people are like happy, right?
Yeah.
So we kind of have to go back, again, I'll use it, common sense, let's do, let's come back to that.
That's been the recurring theme through this whole conversation. I've been hearing communication, transparency, common sense, trust.
Hell, you gotta help, John, if you don't help the small businesses, you're never going to go anywhere. If you don't help the people that need help, cause you never know when you're going to be in that shoe. Cause right now you might be everything going great, but you never know when you're in that shoe. And I learned that. I went through hell and back in my life and I saw things that I would say to myself, I'm like, you know what? Wouldn't wish this on my worst enemy. But it made me stronger, but it also made me understand that, hey, it's not just about me, it's about us and the community.
Yeah. You know, I think that's a fair point because I think with all of the development that's going on, you know, there's been so many changes in Poway. It's not the same city that it was when it was incorporated in, what, 1980? The whole energy and vibe of the city is actually quite different than even when I moved in to Poway in 96. So, yeah, that's an interesting point, you know, the, the community field, you still get it, like if you go to the Little League field, right?
That's why I quote, I quote, I love it. I love it. People say, Tony, what, how do you sit there and coach three teams with flag? I love seeing the families.
Yeah.
I love seeing the kids, you know, I, I work at the school district.
Oh, you do?
As a character coach.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's like, you know, three, four hours a day, I volunteer my time and go down there and, and make sure that they don't fight. But I love seeing, I love seeing the kids interact and teaching them. You know, and sometimes like I go back, I'm like, ah, you know, it's like, maybe we need to go back to the roots and, and of the problems and say, hey, we need to go back to doing the things the, the right way.
Interesting. Okay, here's a question.
Sure.
Do you wear a hat indoors?
You know that, you know that answer.
I know, it's just. It's funny how.
Hey, my dad taught me and, and he was hardcore Italian and he only said it once. And one time, one time only type deal.
Yeah.
And, and again, I didn't, you know, I didn't agree with 90% of my stuff that my dad, because obviously I had my own opinions, but respect. You have to give respect to get respect. You want to talk about wearing a hat? When I, we have Little League and we do the pledge, we all take our hats off. I don't care if you're bald, I don't give, we got redhead or what, no, we all take it. So I don't understand where the concept of somebody saying that they're a cowboy or I wear a hat and, no, that doesn't, that doesn't fly in my book.
It's, it's an interesting topic because some people feel very passionately about it. It was just, for me, it was never really an issue when I was being, while I was growing up, maybe.
A true, and I have friends of mine, because remember I was involved with the rodeo committee back in the day and all that. So a true cowboy, when they walk into a place, they take their hat off, they put it underneath their arm and say, howdy ma'am.
Okay.
They always did that to my mom. Every time they went up there, they took their hat off, they gave her a kiss, hi mama, how you doing? Remember when I had the horse come into the bar, John? So there's a lot of story, a lot of things that, you know, so it, yeah, you know, I think a lot of it too.
See, I wasn't raised in a country town, so some of those things I didn't learn as a kid.
Well, remember this, what, I mean, Poway is a country where we had horses and still do, unfortunately not in, you know, as abundant as before, but they're still, you know, you go down to Terragoneta and I saw one actually, you remember you were talking about people not right? I actually saw one going up, but they're like on the outskirts where more people don't see them. So, you know, keeping that, that feeling, yeah, I love it. But you still have to have respect.
So what's next on the campaign trail? I mean, we're getting nearer election day.
We've got, we're, we're talking, we're still going pound of payment. Obviously, you know, I've got my sign guys out there flipping signs, you know, it's, you know, there's so, so much you can do as one person. You know, I've got friends that are helping out, we've got mailers going out, we've got obviously posts and stuff, you know, it's just the word of mouth. You know, my thing, John, is that if, if you gotta go out and vote, if you want to change, you gotta do it.
Right on.
That's it.
Well, I mean, I wish you all the luck. I mean, it's, you're in a very competitive race. You know, the, the district one is just two guys, right? So, but yours is, is a bit of a wild card, you know, because there's three of you. And it's curious to see, because each of the three of you have, like I said, a different approach, kind of represent different things. And I'm very curious to see how it's going to sort out.
Me too.
Now, let me ask you this, let's just say hypothetically that you, you get the most votes, but let's just say you only got 45% of the vote. Would you win or does it, do you have to go to a runoff?
No, that, there's no runoff in the way, I, I believe when there's three or more candidates, they should have a runoff of two people get the majority of the votes and they should never runoff against each other. But obviously it doesn't happen in, in this local election, the way we're set. And I think that's one reason why I, sometimes, you know, you look at the, the mayor race. You know that, John, come on, you, you got a lot of the friends that I know. You, you only can cut a pie in so many different slices. You got six people running? Everybody's going to get a certain percentage, no matter what, because they have friends, they have family.
Right.
So now you take that 1%, 2% that they may get and you times it by five people, there's 10% of the votes is already gone.
That's right.
Now you've got the incumbent, he's going to get his guys no matter what. You've got a solid challenger and that, now if the other three start taking away certain things, what happens?
Yeah. It's a crazy, interesting dynamics. And, and yeah, for the mayoral race, it, to me, that's interesting too, because Mayor Voss, you know, won in 2014 when he beat Higginson, reelected in 2018, but now it's 2022, the world has changed in Poway. A lot of the comments that are driving your candidacy, I'm hearing from a lot of other people in the community. I don't think it's going to be a cakewalk for Voss in, in the mayor race as well. So your race, district one race, the mayor race, all three of them are fascinating.
They all have their own unique twist and plot and storyline. You know, as an outsider looking in the mayor race, you know, my, with having that many candidates, it's tough to beat the incumbent.
Very much, yeah.
Tough. In our races, obviously the incumbent is, is no longer running, but it's almost like they want to put, you know, a, a protege of the incumbent mold of whoever was the, the candidate or the, the incumbent as, and I'm going to say it, their puppet.
Well, there, there are certain candidates that are definitely aligned with the powers that be on city council, to put it politely, right? And that's why I think these races are just so interesting, because they're change candidates, they're status quo candidates.
Just to me, I'm still trying to rattle my brain and these two things that we'll probably end on this is that if you have someone that changes their affiliation last second to get an affiliation recommendation, what does that say when you're on the council? If you get it, if he gets in? Is he going to do what the people want? Or is he going to do what the council wants? Cause it sounds to me, he wants to do what the council wants because that's why they're all backing him. You can't make change i- if that happens.
Yeah, well, it, my understanding, again, I don't know the detail, but it sounds like he changed his affiliation from independent or no party preference to Republican, we're talking about your challenger Peter DeHoff. And the minute he changed his affiliation, he got the endorsement from the local San Diego Republican Party.
Which by the way, he paid for the, the endorsements to get brought out. It wasn't a, a slam and the only reason why is because Mayor Voss had called certain people and say, hey, we want him. And that I know for a fact, because I had conversations with the people that were involved. So, and to me, it does, again, transparent, I don't, it doesn't bother me if someone's going to call me and say, Tony, oh, you know, no. This shouldn't be about a party, this should be about what's right for the city. And if you think changing your party and getting the, the vote of confidence per se from your, your city council members and Mayor Voss is the right thing to do, I wouldn't vote for him if I wasn't running.
Isn't it fascinating how in a, a so-called nonpartisan race in little old Poway, that big party politics are involved in this? It's incredible.
We talked about it earlier, is that how, it baffles me and I scratch my head thinking about this in the last couple of weeks is, wow, the money that's being spent on a small race in Poway, the city and the country. Somebody or someone knows something more than they're letting on.
Yeah.
You can do a podcast in that, Johnny, we can sit down, I mean, it's just like, you know, like, you know, he said, you said, I said, or, you know, as the world turns, Telemundo. That's, that's what I think.
Yeah, a couple more comments here, if you don't mind, just, we're near the end here, but I want to make sure everyone's voice is heard. So.
Yuri, I'm not going to beat you, I promise, man, we're, we're going to get, we're going to be done here. I talk, love talking to John.
Yeah. And see, Yuri was two hours and 55, we're at two hours and 20.
Yeah, but we started, we started late, John, we started at seven ish.
No, but I'm counting from, when I hit the go live button.
I'm past my bedtime now.
Okay. So Ed Franklin says, I wear a hat inside all the time, it's my moniker.
I respectfully disagree in, in that, I mean, it's, it's what you do, that's fine. But I don't think that when you're doing the pledge and there's a flag there that you wear a hat. You don't do that.
Is Mayor Voss, where is hat during the pledge?
I don't want to get into it.
Okay. I would be shocked if he did.
I don't want to get into it. All I know, all I know is that when we had it in 2018, that was, that was one of the things that I made a comment to, it was like, how dare you? But again, may have changed, I don't really pay attention to that amount, because it's, 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 to me, it's like, hey, that's what you want to do? That's what you want to be known for? More power to you. I like to have him write another song and, and, yeah.
So Delena Wolf says, it's obvious from the research you do that Peter DeHoff is carried by Voss. Stay the course is his motto.
Yeah, I mean, if you read his candidate statement, doesn't say that I want to change things, says, I am endorsed by the city council and I want to stay the course. What does that mean? Stay the court, we want to keep everything the same, we want to keep every, we don't need to change anything. Have you not heard what people are talking about? Have you not listened to the people that you talk to? Or do you really not care? Cause you can wa, I know he walks the streets, he, I've seen him. You know, people don't really, and I'm not going to get into, he said, you said, the people like, well, wait a minute, you know? He's not one of those personal type of, if he's going to sit there and stay the course, I mean, he's afraid to, to ask questions.
And Delena goes on to say, it's obvious from, oh, excuse me, nothing will change with him in a seat.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
He'll have a hat on too, I think.
And Ed, Ed says, just for clarification, I always take it off of the pledge or Star Spangled Banner, church, prayer, yada, yada.
Thank you, because you know what? When I go to church, I guarantee you that you, it doesn't matter what religion, you, you don't wear a hat. You know, everybody has their preferences and we're not going to get in that, that whole deal, but it's again, comes down to respect. And, you know, you're, you're not above, you know, you may be the mayor, you may be, you're not above the people. You should be for the people.
Tony, we gotta get you home so you can take care of your kids, gotta tuck them in, man.
God, you know what? It's been a pleasure, John, I always love talking to you. Follow me on Facebook, you know what, even as a friend, you know, you have Russo for Poway, that's one page, but as a friend, you guys could see, you know, we talked about this, doing podcasting and, and I've had a lot of great guests, but my thing is just, we want to make sure that we go back to common sense, have a voice, address the issues and make sure that we really respect the people that are talking.
It's a great way to wrap it up, huh?
That's it.
Tony, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you on your campaign. And we're in the homestretch here, my friend, so.
Two, what, the two more weeks today?
People are voting right now, man. I haven't voted yet and you're in my district. So this is part of the fun of me having a chance to talk with you. So I'm more informed on what I'm going to do.
Hey, look for the mailers and you know what? Questions, guys, have you had questions? We talked about this before, I don't mind, you know, answering the questions on Facebook and this, and I don't want to get into, you know, a heated debate, like they would tell, but I'd love, you know, interacting with people and maybe I don't have all the answers, but I'll find them.
Right. You'll do the digging.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks again, friends, we'll see you later.
Have a good one, guys, thank you.